Okay, thanks. Go ahead and sit down.
Welcome to the August 30th Planning Commission meeting for the City of Edina. Welcome to that beautiful evening. Jackie, could you take role, please?
Commissioner Thorson.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
President.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Mulvey.
Here.
Chair Nalaw.
Yes, here. Thank you very much, Jackie. The first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Everyone has the agenda. Any questions, any comments? I think there'll be a slight change a little bit later in the meeting, but it'll still be on the agenda. Commissioner Thorson?
Motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you. Next, we have the minutes from the August 16th meeting. Does anyone have any comments? Commissioner Lee.
Okay, I had a few suggestions. Let's see. All right, on page three, I just want to make sure that I know that Jackie does an excellent job of recording our long and lengthy conversations. We are trying, I think, to hopefully not have to record exactly who said what, but record it more as comments. So on page three, at the bottom of the page, I guess I would like it to state Commissioners noted the following, and perhaps add Commissioner Nemiroff's opinion down there without having to state his name. All right, on the next page, page four. This was a comment, I just wanted to clarify because I had made the comment. The last bullet point about middle of the page before public hearing. Could we have that changed, too? It was suggested the two-year maximum may be excessive if the structure is permitted to be located in the front yard. That was really my point. It wasn't so much the two-year itself, but in conjunction in relation to the front yard visibility. So it was suggested the two-year maximum may be excessive if the structure is permitted to be located in the front yard.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Does anyone else have any comments on the Commissioner Lee's comments or the minutes themselves? Is everyone? Commissioner Bennett?
Quick thing, I'm usually on that roll call twice, so just strike one of them.
You have such a presence.
Yeah. Talking too much.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, I had one more.
Commissioner Lee?
Yep, sorry.
That's fine.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Let's see. All right, it was in relation to the 70th and Cahill. I believe that's on the very last page. Top of the page. Planner Teague, starting with that. The very last sentence, I would like to note that it was further, Teague further indicated the city will be reasonable with the consultants and if needed can discuss extensions for, oh wait, can discuss and, I'm sorry, can discuss fee and end date extensions for the small area plans. Further indicated the city will be reasonable with the consultants and if needed can discuss fee and end date extensions for the small area plans.
Is there any discussion about these changes? Anyone opposed to these changes?
I move approval of the meeting minutes subject to the changes outlined by Commissioner Lee.
Second. Thank you. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to our public hearing section of the meeting tonight. We have two public hearings on the agenda. I will first state that Item B, public hearing variance request for 7710, Marth Court, it is my understanding that that has been postponed to a later Planning Commission meeting. Is there anyone here for that proposal? So it won't upset anyone in the audience. So with that stated, my understanding is that we only have one public hearing tonight, and that is for a variance request on 4505 Nancy Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The subject property is located at 4505 Nancy Lane. The property is located south of Nancy Lane cul-de-sac. It backs up to a ponding area. The property was added on to in 2015. Some of you were on the Planning Commission when that occurred. This is a survey of the property that was done in 2015 when the Rambler had an addition of a second floor. They needed variances at that time. You can see that the outlined area is the actual buildable area of the lot, so that is where they could actually build within the lot or within the confines of the setback. So there's quite a lot of lot and part of the home that is non-conforming. They've completed the project and now are hoping to add a deck behind the home. At the time that they did their expansion, they had an idea that they would like to do a deck or just have the patio remain. They weren't sure. Now they would like to go forward with the deck expansion, which also would require a variance, given the fact that the minimum setback from the ponding area is currently 50 feet. Now, prior to that in 1990, and the house was built many years before that, the minimum setback required from the ponding area was 25 feet, and the property met those requirements. And in fact, where they would like to locate the deck would have met those requirements back in 1990. However, since that time, the setback has doubled, so that's why the house is currently non-conforming. And really, there's nothing that can be done in the backyard in terms of improvements, given the setback from the ponding area that's currently required. They also had an issue with lot coverage. The zoning ordinance only counts the lot area that's above the ponding area, not below, even though their lot line does go into the water. The area that's calculated for coverage is only that area that is above the water line, and the maximum allowable area is 25 percent. Their original plan was too large. It was also centered in the back of the house, which made it closer to the pond. It also exceeded the lot coverage requirement, so they've had to redo this deck plan a number of times in order to try to mitigate some of those issues. They will have to remove some of the existing patio that's back there right now, and they are proposing the deck as far over to the east as they can. It's actually behind the garage. It would have been more advantageous to put it, sort of center it in the house where there's living space on that main floor. So this is a schematic of the deck. Looks pretty large, given this schematic. It's about 281 square feet. This is a little different view of that. And there's some existing pictures of the improvements of the home with the second And this is the doorway that they would like to access, the deck that would actually be behind the garage instead of ideally where they wanted to put it, would have been right out in the middle area. Now, that doorway wasn't part of the original plan. In 2015, there was a window there, and it was pointed out by staff to the builder that it's really a doorway going to nowhere, and that their only option, without getting a variance, would be to have a 50-square-foot landing and steps going down to access the patio. They put the door in because they weren't exactly sure what kind of design or what they wanted to put in, whether it would be just access to the rear yard. Now they're coming forward with that deck expansion proposal. So given that there are practical difficulties, staff believes the proposed deck is reasonable use of the property. The deck will occupy the rear yard space that is the farthest from the pond and will be further from the pond than the existing northwest corner of the home. This corner here is much closer to the pond than the proposed deck will be. The deck will be further from the water body. The expansion is a reasonable deck in the least impactful location. If it would have been built prior to 1990, there would be no variance requested. Staff does recommend approval based on the variance on the following findings, that the proposed location of the deck is reasonable, given the limitations of the site. It would be located farther from the pond than the existing home. The property received variances in 2015 to convert a Rambler into a two-story home because there's just so limited opportunity, and those conditions haven't changed. The setbacks haven't changed. They really can't do anything in that location without the benefit of variance. And the practical difficulty for the property is the restrictive setbacks and non-conforming nature of the structure. The proposed deck will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The proposed deck will, expansion will be above grade, will maintain a greater setback from the pond than the back corner of the house. It's actually been redesigned to try to mitigate the impact of the deck on the property. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Planner Acker. Does anyone on the Planning Commission have questions for Planner Acker? I have one. This is a deck. Is your analysis, does a lot of your analysis turn on the fact that it's a deck as opposed to, say, a more prominent structure?
I think it certainly has impact in terms of, you know, how close it would be to the pond. I would look at it differently, certainly. I would look at it differently, certainly. It's, a deck is not as impactful as, say, a porch or an extension to the home. They were very mindful when they put the second floor that they would just go straight up. The footprint didn't change, except for a small garage expansion to the side, which met the requirements. So they were not trying to get any closer to the pond when they originally designed the addition. But I think it's reasonable to want to have some living space. I mean, in any other typical situation, you would be able to access your rear yard and have a deck or patio typically.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Lee.
Chris, I do remember this project, and I just want to make sure I understand this. When we reviewed it at the time, the plans did not have a door going off the back to nowhere. It was a window, is that correct? Correct. So how does, if the plans get approved in that manner, how does the door get inserted later? Was that another permit applied for or a change? No, it was part of the permitting process. It was part of the permitting process. The window placement for the variance showed windows instead of a door. That really isn't enough of a change to trigger it to return to the Planning Commission in terms of the variance. They decided they wanted a door opening. I think I may have, this was the original proposal, and that's the window I'm referring to. These windows that are not there, they're actually shorter windows. I mean, really, to me, they almost look like French doors. Well, I do remember the comment at the time. There was some discussion among the Planning Commission at the time saying, "That looks a little suspicious because it looks as though it could potentially be a door to a deck someday." And there were concerns about it being so close already, the house being non-conforming that close to the water edge. But at the time, that was not part of the proposal. There was no mention of a deck. So that actually was one of the reasons why it was approved. Now there is a door built even without having gone for the variance or requested the variance for the deck. So the hardship or the practical difficulty, their experience is they can't build a deck without the variance. But I think it's almost that door, they are able to put the door in without having to notify the city? No, it was part of the building permit plan. They did indicate that on the building permit, and they can do that. They can have a deck, or they can have a stoop, a landing of 50 square feet with stairs going down probably to the patio to access the backyard. So they can have a very small landing. So that would require a variance? No. And I'm sorry, I wasn't clear about that. They can access the rear yard with a door and a small landing. Okay. So right now, they have a door, so they can get access to the backyard from that door without needing a variance to come here. They're coming here today because they want to build a deck. Is that right? Correct. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Planner Acker? Thank you, Planner Acker. Oh, Commissioner Bennett?
I guess it seems in most circumstances, perhaps it's a patio or some kind of feature that's strictly impermeable. Does that trigger any attention to see how stormwater is managed and how this might affect it? And seeing that the deck has pretty little detail, can you just speak to why no analysis like that is involved?
I did have the city engineer look at it, and the deck has, it's not going to affect the drainage on the property, but it was looked at, and he didn't feel it was worthy of a memo.
The details just look so, I guess, limited that it'd be hard to know much about it. And I guess seeing the grades, it's easier to tell, but certainly decks can have things underneath that shed water differently into certain locations, and erosion might be an issue in that close to a pond. Just want to point those things out.
Any further questions for the city staff at this moment? Thank you, Planner Acker. Would the applicant like to address the commission about the proposal?
Hello, Mark Seberg, 4505 Nancy Lane. I don't have a whole lot to add to what Planner Acker already presented, but we just are intending to put a deck on for recreational use, a nice outdoor gathering space. And I would need to go back and review the original plans, but Commissioner Lee, to your comments about the door, I actually didn't, I thought we did propose the door in the original drawings, but what was shown does not agree with that. So I do remember at the time, we had said, yeah, no intention at the time of building a deck. That was simply because of budgetary reasons, but we had always thought that we wanted to do that later on, and so that is the reason for it at this point. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Did have a lengthy discussion, though, about the impact towards the lake, so I think that was ruled, went in your favor, the fact at the time, it was expressed that there wasn't an interest in putting a deck on there. That's my recollection.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion with the applicant? Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Hamilton?
I think this is minor, but there is a difference between the deck that's shown on the plan and the deck that's shown in the perspective. One deck is square, one has 45-degree angles to it. One is kind of a bay window, one, let's see if that's north on the east side, and the other one is a bump out on the east side.
Yep.
Just so that, if we put another deck on the house and we end up doing this again, we know what we said this time.
Sure. Yes, and the, I'm not sure which piece to call it, the artist rendering or the sketch has a bump out, and it's a square corner. You're talking about on the east side, there's a little six-foot bump out. The intention there was to have it for a grill. When I went to the Lowe's.com deck planning tool, they wouldn't allow me to put square corners on it.
Oh, really?
It only had angled corners, for whatever reason.
Well, there you go.
That's the reason for the discrepancy. The intention is square corners.
Gotcha.
Yep.
One thing I noted was on the plan, it says the Mitchell property.
Yes, that's holdover from the surveyor, who, the previous owner to, when I owned the property, was Mitchell. That was the last name. So that just didn't get updated on this survey.
That's probably the smallest issue you'll deal with tonight. Heather, any other questions or discussion for the applicant? Thank you. Maybe we'll ask you more, but.
Okay, thank you.
This portion of the meeting is a public hearing, which means that anyone in the audience can come to address this topic. If there's anyone here that wishes to discuss this particular matter, you will have three minutes. Is there anyone here tonight? Please state your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes. The lights will, green, yellow, red, I'm sure you're familiar with that.
Perfect. I'm Dave Meander, 4443 Garrison Lane. I'm about a block away from this property that we're talking about. I have no problem with it whatsoever. I know there's a lot of people in the neighborhood that have existing houses too close to the pond, so this, you know, it feels unfortunate for him that that's where the house was built, back when it was built. I have no problems with this variance.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this matter?
Motion to approve the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, is there any discussion among the Planning Commission on this matter? Does anyone have any things they'd like to say or questions for their questions? Commissioner Lee?
I did want to talk a little bit about some existing water bodies. This is a very interesting area in that all the homes are non-conforming. It's a very interesting parcel of land. It has a very unique history. Today, it would not even be allowed to be built upon. The water level, I took a drive down there just to take a look. This particular lot, anything on that side, it's almost level. The lower level is level with the water, almost. So my concern is that there should be very little encroachment upon that lake already. If we are trying to attain a 50-foot setback, we have here a non-conforming lot. I think that in this particular case, it is difficult for me to see the practical difficulty as that is something that is actually just brought by the desire of the homeowner themselves. This particular house was enlarged two years ago, so at that time, it was purchased new. I think that most of those things, those existing conditions, are known to owners when they buy it. So in the case where the second floor was justifiable, at least to the commission at that time, it was felt strongly that there were some things that needed to be updated and potentially a family might want a bigger home. They were at that time staying within the existing foundation, with the exception of a small portion, so there was a lot of discussion on that. But I do recall very much so that one of the, we did discuss the backyard with relation to the lake, and there was a sense of relief that there was not going to be any deck. There was a patio. I think they still have a patio back there. So it's just for those reasons that I won't be able to support that, but I understand that we have a new commission here, and I would just probably make the point of considering not setting a precedence, because every one of these homes is non-conforming. So there are reasons for having that setback, and with our, with all the rain we just had in Texas, I just, you never can tell what that water level is going to be doing in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Any further comments about encroachment on the lake or other comments? Commissioner Lee has, Commissioner Bennett, any other comments you may have also?
Yeah, I guess for our benefit, would be nice to know just a little bit more about the history of that pond, if, you know, what kind of water quality issues it might have, what kind of issues it might have prone to flooding, and the history to inform our decision a little more. And usually with a memo, we get that, so at least personally, I would have liked to just seen them say, "Yeah, it's okay," and maybe some rationale. At least in this particular circumstance, I don't have too much of an issue with, you know, where the grades are and everything, but certainly if there was a walkout below or there's a future one for that, people do put decks in with something underneath to shed water to either a downspout or away from the house further, which, I mean, is going to deliver more water to a certain area, increase sedimentation, all that kind of stuff into the pond, et cetera. But, you know, if this is just an open deck going down below, water is going to kind of do the same thing. And it just kind of makes sense. They have a patio there, one another recreational space. Just seems like they are kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. That's all I have to say.
Any other commissioners with comments? I think that Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Bennett are raising an interesting nuance to the discussion of the impact of the variance. And I think my analysis, and give me feedback, is that when we typically consider variances, we're considering impact on the neighborhood, impact on surrounding homeowners, impact on the architecture, but we're not necessarily considering impact on the environment, which I think is essentially what Commissioners Lee and Bennett are raising. I don't know, you know, does the city staff have any thoughts about those comments, or, you know, the environmental, the potential environmental impact of the encroachment? You may not. It does seem like it's something, I mean, that maybe should be thought of.
I mean, just to add, if it was, if it were a porch or something totally impermeable and it's shedding water totally differently, you know, surely the city staff, the engineer would have some kind of comment, but I'm assuming it's just, what we didn't know is it's just an open deck. That water's just going to fall between, so it really doesn't change the condition by which the water travels in that area to a point where I'd be even concerned at all. So I just needed to hear that, I guess.
Any further comments, then?
I have no problem with this. This is a deck on the back of a house. It's fairly small. I don't know why we wouldn't let someone build a deck.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I kind of like have similar thoughts about the environmental stuff, but just what the planners were saying earlier about how they asked, like, an environmental person, and they like didn't have any problems with it, that seems to indicate that the deck wouldn't really change much. And then on top of that, seeing as how the house is already non-conforming and that I think the west side of the property extends farther than the deck would, I don't really see how there would be much of a problem with this.
Thank you. Also, Commissioner Jones, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Hamilton?
This is nitpicking, but as a thought, it's a south-facing deck. You're going to get a pretty good sun penetration underneath the deck, so you're going to get grass or something to grow that'll absorb the runoff water back probably about six or seven feet from the outside edge of the deck, but inside of that, nothing will grow. So when the water comes down through the deck, it's going to hit mud. And you might think about that in narrowing the deck, you might think about narrowing the deck and making it longer, just to get more sun penetration under the deck, so you get something to grow down there, because I think it'll look nicer for you. But I agree. It's a deck on the back of the house.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamilton. Any further discussion on this issue? Jackie, would you be willing to do a voice roll on this item?
Voice? Oh, yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the variance, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second motion, second. Now, would you be willing to do a voice vote, or I mean, a roll vote?
Commissioner Hawes?
Yea.
Commissioner Lee?
Nay.
Commissioner Thorson?
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulvey?
Yes.
Chair Nalaw?
Aye. Thank you. So the motion passed. It'll go to the city council? It does not? It's done deal?
That's final action, unless somebody were to appeal.
Okay. Good luck with your deck. Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, the other matter for public hearing on tonight's agenda has been tabled to a future meeting. So with that, while I'll chant it, while Planner Acker... been tabled to a future meeting. So with that, while Planner Teague sets up, it's time for community comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the planning commission about any member relative to our purview that isn't on the agenda, now is your opportunity.
Motion closed, can you comment?
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us, thank you. And that brings us to a couple of reports and recommendations. And for members of the audience, we have a decent turnout tonight. One thing I'll say is that for these matters, these are not public hearings, but these are public meetings, which means that there isn't there isn't an opportunity for the audience to speak for three minutes on these matters. These are just discussions between city staff, the applicant, and the planning commission. If you would like to make a comment, if anyone in the audience would like to make a comment to any of these matters, there are a couple of different ways you can do it. One is if the these matters come to a future planning commission or city council meeting for actual review as opposed for a feedback, which is what this is, you can attend those meetings and give and have three minutes to speak at that time. Alternatively, you can send an email to the city to register your comments, and the email should be sent to mail@edinamn.gov. So with that, Planner Teague?
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. So before us, we have a sketch plan review where you're asked to provide nonbinding comments for for the applicant to consider as they consider a formal application. This sketch plan is a little bit unique, and it's virtually a code compliant plan. But similar to the restoration hardware on the same site, they did go through the sketch the sketch plan process to get feedback from the planning commission and council before they make a formal application. So this this property is located out at Southdale. It's the northwest corner of the site, so essentially the last of the four corners to be redeveloped. Again, it's right on the intersection of 66th and France. Property is zone PCD3, planned commercial district. So again, as we look at the pyramid of discretion that we always look at as we review projects, this plan is up in the red zone where we don't have a lot of discretion. It's more or less a checklist to make sure that it's code compliant. So what the proposal is, is for a 5,000-square-foot restaurant, a Shake Shack, again, to be located out on the corner. The applicant has the the greater Southdale area principles have been shared with the applicant. They've provided responses to those principles that were included in your packet. They did make an initial proposal, and they've made a number of changes. This was the initial proposal. You can see the loading dock was located along the the street, and there wasn't a prominent entrance facing France Avenue. So they have revised the plans to shift that loading area to the south, and they've created that outdoor seating area. We'll take a look at a rendering in a minute, again, to engage the street. They've provided a new entrance off of France and off of the parking lot as well. But you can see they've added sidewalk connections off of France, again, connecting to the existing sidewalks on the site. Be significant landscaping around the site. The existing monument sign that's out there for Southdale, and there's some some mature trees out there, those would all be removed as a result of this project. So to quickly show some renderings, so this is that kind of outdoor seating area that would face 66th Street. This is a rendering that would this is as if you were standing with Macy's at your back, so looking toward France. And then this is a rendering as if you were standing right on the corner, looking into the corner of the building. Again, this is that that patio area, France Avenue here, and then 66 as you make your way around. The, as I mentioned, the site is or the proposal is code compliant. It meets our setback requirements for building. There is a parking variance. It's as as all of our any development on the Southdale area. If you take the Southdale site as a whole, they are short parked. Parking study was actually included in the RH proposal that we considered a few months ago, and to take a look at the the parking in this area. Traffic study would be updated along with that parking analysis, essentially, as part of a formal application. We've asked the consultant to take a look at some of that one-way, the ring road scenario and how that all works. So that would come forward as part of a formal application. One area of note, oh, it's kind of off the page, but you can kind of see there's a 35-foot notation here for the parking lot that would be just to the south. As you recall, we've we've talked about that 50-foot setback as part of the the Greater Southdale visioning plan and the principles. That's our goal. While this parking lot is, it does meet the our code requirement for a 20-foot setback, it's not hitting that 50-foot that we're suggesting as part of the those Southdale principles. But again, all the the actual setback requirements are met, as indicated with the 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 table that's included in your staff report. With that, I will stop and answer any questions that you may have. The development team is here to make a presentation as well.
Any questions? I'm seeing a question telepathically. Commissioner Hamilton?
Two things, if I could. One of them is signage. Does the signage with that fascia, that linear fascia sign, does that meet code?
Yeah, you know, we haven't run a percentage whether that meets our 15% of the wall. We would have to run that calculation. I haven't done that yet.
It looks a little bold.
Mm-hmm.
And the other one that I'm seeing on what's marked on on our packet sheet is A20, which was the site plan that you just talked about with the red 35 feet. There's a note in there of a dash and two dots delineating tenant work limits. And yet, it seems like that entire parking area is getting redone. Is that something we should be thoughtful about or not?
The parking area to the south of the of the work limits?
Well, the parking area to the south, the sidewalk to the north, and to the, what is that, west? That whole ring sidewalk appears to be outside the tenant work limits. So who's putting it in?
Yeah, and that would be a new that's probably a question for the applicant as far as what that denotation is, because they would be putting in that sidewalk connection from France. So they would certainly be working outside that.
If it doesn't concern us, I don't need to know. But if it means it's not going to happen, then perhaps we do.
Yes, we would want to be clear exactly what they're building. It's my belief, though, that they would be installing those those sidewalks as shown on the site plan.
Okay. That's my piece.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Strauss?
Director, the the parking issues, it certainly looks like they have provided for plenty of parking for their establishment, right? I mean, but the analysis really is they just take the entire site and what?
We do. So as part of the analysis, we would take a look at the immediate parking and make sure there is enough. I'm sure Shake Shack and their developments all across the country that they're going to provide enough parking. That said, there's plenty of spaces off-site should there ever be a shortage where, as with all of the other projects that we see on the Southdale site, there's that shared parking and that shared access arrangement with essentially the entirety of the Simon properties, the Southdale site.
And that 7,197 spaces, I mean, that's sort of outdated parking analysis, isn't it?
It is. It's based on our current codes.
But probably being looked at.
But yes, it's if we required them to have that many parking stalls, well, they would have to build a deck, and it would be parking that would largely not be used.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, you know, back to the same question. I mean, it it does seem kind of like our tools for analyzing the parking aren't quite up to speed because the inability to segment the Southdale space. I mean, there's some areas over there where they're overloaded, and there's some areas where it's vacant. And it's, you know, I'm sure Shake Shack is sitting at their corporate headquarters saying, we'll never need 6,000 stalls for our restaurants. I mean, although they'd love to have that problem. But, I mean, is there a way to segment the parking need by area of the premises or?
So the the parking that's being replaced, you know, it's a solid parking lot now. So all of those parking stalls are included in the parking calculations for all of Southdale. So we're taking away parking stalls. We're adding some here. But the net result is we're losing more parking than what's there today, and we're gaining a little building. So we need to look at the the site as a whole.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Are there any further comments for Planner Teague, or should we invite the applicant to come up and talk to us and have a discussion? Well, if the applicant would like to give a presentation about what you're doing, we look forward to hearing from you and to having a conversation.
Good evening. Does this work?
It does.
Oh, I can use the mouse, too. Oh, great. Great. Okay, I'll start here, then. I won't need this. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Cliff Pointer. I am a civil engineer with Simon Property Group. We are the owner of the Southdale Mall. Tonight, we're before you here with the Shake Shack proposal. Very excited about this. As as Carrie mentioned, it's the last corner on the available to on our property. And it's, you know, just as dynamic and exciting as some of the other things we've got going on on some of the other corners. I know currently, the hotel is under construction. We've got a recent approval for the restoration hardware on the other opposite corner, which we're all very excited about. And this sort of this proposal, we feel will sort of complete and round out the corners on the development. As Carrie mentioned, we started, we had sat down, put thought into our site plan. We wanted a building, if you can tell by the renderings, is very vibrant, is a I feel a good fit architectural-wise for the center. It is, you know, it has a combination of exciting public outdoor space along with interesting architecture on the exterior of the building that we feel really, really fits well in the corner. We had we had started with that 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 building flipped the other way. And after submitted that to Carrie and his team, and they'd taken a look and gave us some good feedback. And we kind of we sat down and thought about it, and it makes a little more sense to flip it so that we have our our vibrant areas facing the 66th Street and France corridors. The building itself, just as you can see from the renderings, it doesn't show it as well as it should. But in the area, I hope everyone can see the pointer here, but in the area of this side of the building, we have our main, a lot of glass here in our dining room area. So this is where a lot of the activity will be seen inside the building, especially viewing it from the public corridors. And then, you know, during the warmer months, when we have a lot of activity on the patio, that'll that'll really draw the eye, we feel, to the corner. The parking is a certainly a concern. I know that we, you know, every every proposal that's been brought forth on this property, it's certainly been a topic of discussion. We did contract with the city's parking and traffic consultant to take a look at the site, you know, as a part of not only what we did with the hotel, but what we did with the residential tower on the other corner and the RH recent approval. They did take a look at this. And yes, we will still need a variance on the property. We are still code short. However, they did counts. We made sure the counts took place at the peak of our shopping season in December. So they did aerial counts using drone-based photography. They also used people on the ground to count underneath the decks during those periods. And we're quite comfortable that we're still overparked. The I know there are some Carrie brought forth some questions about setbacks and stuff in the and maybe increasing some of the green space around the building. We're certainly open to that. And, oh, you'd ask about the tenant limit line. That's probably shouldn't be on this plan. I apologize for that. Essentially, that is Shake Shack will be a tenant of ours. We will still own the property. That delineates where our work stops as a landlord, and their work picks up as a tenant. Everything you see on this plan will be constructed. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We have the architectural team here from Chicago, who is can certainly speak to materials on the building and perhaps talk a little bit about signage. I know I know our submittal is short details. We intend to come back with a full package when we, you know, hopefully getting some good feedback tonight. And we can move forward from there.
I see Commissioner Bennett's ready.
Yeah, probably because I'm hungry. I don't know if I can comment, right? This looks awesome. I just have a general question that maybe isn't too relevant, but just since you're representing Simon, it seems like the other corners of Southdale are more dense. And you said this fits with your vision. I just wanted to kind of hear why why this kind of smaller mass works better for you guys.
So the, you know, we're aware of the vision plan. We're aware for some some multi-level high-density retail at this corner. We have constraints, mostly vision constraints from the corner of 66th and France, that limit our ability to develop this corner due to, essentially, height constraints. We feel very strongly that this is the highest and best use of this corner. This is an active, popular, sort of niche retailer, restaurant that drives a sort of cult following. And we're very excited to have it here. And we would really like it on this corner. Hopefully, that answers your question.
That's great. And I guess my other comment is kind of what Carrie mentioned with the 50-foot setback on that west side. Just seeing how also the sidewalk on France gets very close, you know, to the road. And if things ever change there, I think, you know, if it's doable, it'd be nice to have a little more green space at play to, you know, move the sidewalk inwards. And if trees are there, it'd be pretty difficult to accommodate that.
So from this the like, green space between the sidewalk, the public walk and the back of curb on France, is that?
Well, yeah, the sidewalk right now is right on France. And if something happens on France, and they want to move that closer in, there's just more green space to kind of work with.
It certainly it certainly makes sense. What we're what we're trying to do here is, you know, early meetings we'd had with staff and Carrie and his team, and they had, you know, described a that we want a something that's going to engage the corner. So the hope here is that by creating a small, you know, not a small, but a public gathering spot here, we have elevation challenges. There's, I don't know how familiar you are with the site, but as you look at that, there are there's a large hill there. It's about eight to 10 feet high. So what we're hoping to do is sort of break up that elevation and make it a little easier for people to transition from that public space up up to our building here. So that's the intent. We have some, you know, some, there's some pretty expansive extra sidewalks here that are needed to make ADA work. And we don't, we want to avoid switchback ramps and rails wherever we can, just because they're unsightly and they're cumbersome. We feel this is a good solution also. It may give us some more opportunities to, as we refine this proposal, to park some bikes in there as well, maybe even create a more of a gathering space, nicer landscaping, and perhaps even benches on that if it it's something that would interest.
I guess last thing, just want to say thank you for really addressing the Greater Southdale area vision plan, kind of in great detail. And I know we don't have much discretion here, but, you know, this looks like a beautiful proposal, and seems like you guys got everything covered.
Thank you. Thank you. We did put a lot of work into it. I know the city has also put a lot of work into that vision plan. And it's something that we're not ignoring. I want that to be very, very clear.
Commissioner Hopps?
Yeah, could you describe for everyone a little more of the background of what your limitations are in terms of height and what that entails? I understand it's a it's a view easement, basically.
and I was, I've only been in this, on this side of the table, I was a consultant for 20 years and then came over to this side of the retail side. And I was shocked to learn at how much control essentially tenants or anchors have on a parcel. And then their, their agreement's in place, when they agree to come to a parcel, and these, and these agreements may be 40, 50, 60 years old, that they essentially have to sign off on really any redevelopment proposal. And sometimes that requires money, that sometimes that requires other concessions. This they have signed off on and, but they've let it, let us know that they're at their, nothing any higher could ever go there, that came out of that discussion. So when you say view easement, it's not essentially a view easement, it is a, I guess a view, I want to say, permission?
Right, to a particular tenant.
Yes, we're, we're taking a portion of their viewable area, however, they're okay with it because of other concessions that have been made.
And I can imagine those agreements, you know, you're right, they're, I think they're pretty old. Back in the day, when it was important for people to be able to see a store from the street, to know where it is, it doesn't seem as if in today's world that's as important. I'm sure if the tenant was here, they might disagree. But I guess what the difficulty, I think, from my standpoint is, this is truly one of the most valuable hunks of real estate we have in this city. And we are kind of, as a city, in my mind, handcuffed by this archaic agreement with a tenant to limit our ability to really develop this as it should be developed. And with all due respect to the Shake Shack, but it's, it's a great restaurant, I like eating there, but I just have a hard time with this being really the best that we can do when you dine on this particular hunk of real estate. And so I feel it's a little bit tragic that it ends up being, this is what we have. So I understand, we don't have much discretion with this, I get that, you know, kind of how we're all in the same boat on this, but I do want people to understand why we're in this unfortunate, in my mind, situation. There are lots of places the Shake Shack could go besides this corner.
Any other comments or questions on this proposal? Commissioner Lee?
I would really like to see a lot more green space on that corner. If you really have a concept for your corners and a vision for your property, then I guess I am not quite seeing it, I just see individual corners that don't relate well. We have talked about this property a lot and the thinking is, and you probably know that as well, is that the, the, the building topography of a mall has to change in the future, that most likely will be broken into subsections in some way or another. And even our Southdale plan is looked at in 200 square foot blocks. So every time we hit this property, it's just a stop right away. So I'm glad you came tonight because really, we have always been thinking, we'd love to have this discussion with this property owner, because at some point, we have to have your buy-in as well, that you will move in the future with us. We want Southdale to be vibrant, but there needs to be change here. And all that we're seeing happening right now is that every last empty parcel is being fractioned off and we're just back to little bits and pieces and strip malls. So it is not, not a great project in my mind. I do commend you for attempting to green it up more, obviously it's just asphalt, but I would like to see a whole lot more and definitely if the city is saying 50 feet, it better be 50 feet when it comes back, so, at a minimum, those kinds of things. The material palette, I am not in favor of it, but it, it may be something that's trademarked with, with this, this retailer, so, yeah, that's, that's all I have to say.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I like this plan. I think it's a trusted national chain and that coupled with the fact that you're saying that there is enough parking, seems like this should work. And on top of that, seeing as how the three of the four other corners are occupied, this sort of seems like the natural next step for urbanization in the city. Although, I do agree with what was said earlier, that it does seem like there could be something more here, especially because this is such like prime real estate in Southdale. So maybe that's something to think about, although this does seem like a really good plan.
Any, any other commissioners wish to weigh in tonight? Commissioner Ruby?
Can you clarify, I, I really appreciate the education on the power of the tenants, because that explains a lot. And why, you know, on one corner, the opposite corner, you can have an apartment building that's, like, what is that, like 12 stories?
Oh, that is, oh, like 22, I thought.
22, whatever that is. So huge. And then on this one, you can only have this little one-story thing. But what's confusing to me is the major tenants each have visibility to two corners, the way the tenants are positioned. So why is this corner one story and Restoration Hardware is four?
I think that would, the best answer to that question is that it relates to the strength of the agreements and the strength of the bargaining position of the particular tenants that are counting on the vision triangle from that corner. Is, is your, is the, is the answer? To further, you know, we only have two anchors that own their own parcel and one of them recently left.
Gotcha, okay. That makes a difference, obviously.
Yes.
So, so it's Macy's? It's got, it's Macy's?
Yes.
So, so, but the Restoration Hardware obscures the view to Macy's as well?
But in their original agreements, that was not one of their protected corners.
Okay. Because I, I do agree with the other comment. Actually, I've never eaten at a Shake Shack and so when I first read this, I thought, we're giving up this corner to a fast food restaurant? And I was quite surprised. But I will say that I've since read all the raving reviews of Shake Shack and apparently it's fantastic, so I'll have to go there. But it does seem like it's kind of an unfortunate use of like a really great piece of land.
I mean, the, the property has been available for many, many years. For us to find such a great tenant who's interested in the site and being able to make a deal work with all the other constraints that we've been discussing, we feel like we're at a very unique point in history here, something that's likely to not be repeated. Now, I don't want to say that like that'll never, there'll never be any development there if we don't do anything. However, this particular use on this particular site sort of serendipitously happened. And we feel very strongly that this is our highest and best use that we can do with this corner. And, you know, we've been in the real estate game for many, many years, have relationships with thousands of tenants. And this is the deal we've, this is what we want to do with this corner.
And, and it is 10,000% better than just an asphalt corner? So you do have that one for you?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's a vibrant and unique destination, it'll be only the, I believe it's the first in the Twin Cities that's a standalone. And the tenant is very excited and we are very excited as well.
So where's all the snow gone?
The snow goes in the detention pond, you push it right in there, right there, snow.
Any other comments, discussion for the applicant? One, I had a few things. First of all, the tenant that we're talking about, technically under the agreement, isn't Macy's, it's Dayton's. And for those who do not, don't know Dayton's, you know, may not be long, when you think of Dayton's, think about saying it like you'd say Randolph Scott. And if anybody doesn't get that, we'll have a bean dinner later. I had a couple of questions for you, a couple of comments. And it gets back to the topic raised earlier about parking and, and, and traffic too. And I think some of our traditional tools and measures for parking and traffic might not fully apply here. The, let me start with traffic, because I think that'll lead into the parking issue. The, the main road you're showing, you know, several years ago, your mall put in that round road that goes, you know, that circum, that circumambulates the property. And this portion of the road is, I'm not a mall expert anymore, although my dad used to do a lot of business with Dayton's many, many, many years ago. But I would, I, my personal impression is this portion of the road is, there's some aggressive driving and there's some people that will take turns where you don't expect them. And now you're going to be adding turns into a different direction. People will be going left as well as right, and previously they were always going right. And people will be coming out from the mall and getting into that, into that main artery. So when you come back, what I'd like to suggest is that you think about a way to improve the safety of the road for the, for the, because we're creating a new way. So I would suggest at least consider that and if there's nothing that can be done, perhaps say that, but it would be good to say, here, here's, we thought about road safety. And related to that is parking. And, and you know, obviously the, Shake Shack's never going to need 6,159 stalls and they probably won't even ever need, you know, 600 stalls. But what they are going to need is a certain number of stalls, and I actually have a third comment here related to this, to, from which their customers can approach the store safely on foot. And so that might not necessarily be a parking quantity, but it, from the image you have up, it looks like there's going to be probably enough parking spaces like it would be if you were driving to a restaurant on 394. But when, if you come back, I'd like to see, it would at least be good to have a comment say, we reviewed and we think that within the, within the vicinity of the property, there's sufficient parking for our customers. And then related to that, and I kind of see it on this drawing, is pedestrian safety, because I'm envisioning now that you're going to be having people not only walking from their cars to the restaurant, but you're going to, you may have people walking from the rest, from the mall to the restaurant and back and forth.
We certainly hope.
And in, and in a couple of years, it's my understanding that you're going to get a completely different use at your facility with a health club, with a, with a high-end, nice health club. And people may just walk from the health club to the restaurants, there could be a lot of foot traffic. Now whether lifetime members are going to be eating at Shake Shack, you know, at the, at the, this.
They will, we won't tell anyone.
I don't know, maybe, maybe that's the reward, but my guess is some will. And so when you come back, I would appreciate some kind of contemplation about how to get people, how to improve the safety of the traffic and the pedestrian experience in this corner. I think that, that, those are my comments. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Well, thank you very much, you know, good luck.
Thank you very much, thanks for your time tonight.
And that is tonight, excuse me, public meeting, sketch plan, we have a second sketch plan tonight for the 7200, 7250 France Avenue, it's called the Crossroads now, it's a property we've seen before. And again, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to participate tonight but is unable to, because this isn't a public hearing, it's a public meeting, you can send your comments to edina, excuse me, mail@edinamn.gov. Planner Teague?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair members of the Planning Commission. So this site is located down on France toward our southern border, the intersection of 72nd and France. The site that Chair Nemiroff had mentioned, where we've seen previous development proposals, is the 7200 site. This project before you has combined that site to the south, the 7250. As you can see here, it's, it's an existing office building with surface parking, 7200. And the 7250 site is an existing office building with a parking ramp off the back that is in very poor condition. So the, the site is guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential. It has a height limitation of four stories, it's indicated on the screen. The site is zoned POD planned office district. Might note that some of the surrounding properties, the, the Sunrise Senior Housing is to the north. We've got some duplexes immediately to the west, single-family homes further north and west, got high-density residential and office to the south. So again, looking at the pyramid of discretion, we're down in the green zone on this one with a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning ordinance amendment, or they would be rezoning the site. So the city has complete discretion to say yes or no for a project like this. So the, the development itself, what they're proposing, the site total is 5.2 acres. What they're proposing here is to build up to 334 housing units. They're anticipating the north site would be six stories with some medical office and potential retail. Some of the office users in the existing building to the south would move into the site to the north potentially. They're looking at rental housing in all likelihood for the north portion and they're considering either rental or potentially condos on the south tower. So 20%, 20% of the units are proposed here to be affordable housing, so it would meet, it would exceed our, our affordable housing policy, that could be a potential of if they were to develop to the 334 threshold that they're talking about, 67 units in total. So the overall density proposed here is 64 units an acre. In total, there is about 50, a little over 50,000 square feet of retail that's proposed, again, the two-story on the north side and single-story retail on the south building. Want to point out that the bridge that you see on the screen here, while it's shown, the applicant is not proposing to build that, just indicating that potentially could be built in the future if someone else were to pay for it. What they are proposing is to construct the platform and the trail within their site and we'll see a slide of what that will look like. So it would essentially be stubbed out to the street with the potential for the bridge to be constructed in the future. We did share the plans with the Three Rivers District, their response is included in your packet. They do have some concerns, some, some somewhat significant concerns about ADA standards and not meeting their standards for, for a regional bike trail. They'd like to keep the bikes moving and this has a switchback in it and there's some ADA issues, so some of those types of things would have to be, be resolved. The existing regional trail comes on the south side of Gallagher, it would be located in this, this area here. This would propose a transfer to the north side of Gallagher and through the project and again elevated over France. So again, another rendering, looking north on France, you can see that they're proposing a 14-story building. A massing diagram where you see the 14 stories, six stories off of France here, six stories along 72nd and three and four stories adjacent to those duplexes to the west. Might note that we did, we did ask Mick Johnson of AFO, our consultant in the Greater Southdale area, to provide comments, looking at the project through the eyes of the, the Southdale Working Group. And those, those comments have been provided for you. One of the things he noted is the three to four-story height here, where the work group has talked about that transitioning into the neighborhood at two to three stories. Had some concerns about the wall along 72nd, potentially having the single-story on the bottom stick out in kind of a podium style and the height pushed back. And he did raise some concerns about the, the elevated trail, the bike trail engaging the street. The applicant has responded to the, the principles of the work group and that was also provided in your packet. in your packet. So looking at circulation, proposed vehicle circulation here is highlighted with the red dashes. So the main access would be off of France and Gallagher. Some of you who went through some of the previous proposals for the 7200 property, a lot of concern was raised from the neighborhood about traffic coming down 72nd and into the single-family neighborhood. One of the conditions that the city council talked about was not allowing any access off of 72nd, having all the access off of France. Initially, the county had recommended that they didn't want to allow that curb-cut access off France, that it should come off of 72nd. They have changed their stance on that, and they are agreeable to that access, especially with this plan, we've got the secondary access to the site off of Gallagher. But they are respecting that, that previous condition that was considered by not proposing any access on 72nd. In terms of pedestrian and bike movements, while it's hard to see here, the yellow indicates pedestrian movements. So they are proposing that 50-foot setback that we talk about for green space and sidewalk along France, 30 feet off of Gallagher. So it would be very pedestrian-friendly, providing that boulevard-style sidewalk along 72nd as well and along Gallagher. And so this indicates the path of that potential elevated bridge. So the trail would come in, somewhat of a switchback here, go through the project, and then over France. There's also a bike trail that's proposed, a north-south connection from Gallagher and to the north. In terms of comparing the, the project for our, our general zoning setbacks and, and general standards, a number of, a lot of flexibility is being requested here through our, the setback requirements. Setbacks based on height, so they wouldn't meet our front and side setbacks, so they'd be looking for flexibility through a POD. You do recall we have that provision in our zoning ordinance that talks about any building that's over nine stories in height has to provide a setback that's six times the height of the building to R1 property. So this, based on 160-foot-tall building, a 960-foot setback is required to the nearest single-family property. In measuring that out, it's about 650 feet. So it's within that range, so they would be looking for flexibility there as well. Again, the zoning standard is four stories, 48 feet. This would be up to 14 stories and 160 feet. The FAR proposed here is 1.6. Parking there, very close to the parking standard with this project, and with any formal application, a formal parking and traffic study would be done to analyze the adjacent roads and the parking that's, that's needed to accommodate the, the project. So what would be required here is a comprehensive plan amendment, both in regards to height and density. The current maximum density in that OR range on the west side of France is 30 units an acre. And again, the maximum density proposed here is 64 units per acre. So they would also be requesting rezoning to planned unit development, where we would, should this project ever be approved, we would write zoning standards specific for the site. Just quickly to look, compare the densities to some of our recent projects. The 64 units an acre is pretty similar to projects that we've considered recently. The Millennium, that 60 units an acre is the closest, closest to it. In considering the, the greater Southdale area as a whole, the density that we've talked about as part of the work group is 80 units an acre over the entirety of the Southdale. Thinking about having more density in between France and York with a little bit less density on the edges, so that 64 units an acre ties into that general thinking. In terms of height, again, a big ask here from four stories to 14 stories. In amending the comprehensive plan, it could be done in numerous, numerous ways. It could be specific to this site. We've done that in other locations in town. We could consider 14 stories from this property south to Gallagher. So it would be this site in general, and then to the south, as we have a height limitation down in the Pentagon Park area at 12 stories. So that's something to consider, should a formal application be made in regard to height. So I'll just quickly show some images. The applicant will go through this in more detail, but, and again, there's not a lot of architectural detail here. It's more just massing, to give you an idea of the, the mass and scale. So this is 72nd along here. You can see the six stories toward France with the four stories stepping down somewhat to three stories. And then you see the tower behind. So this, this rendering shows that trail through the development and how that might be constructed. Again, there's the, the trail. This would be from France along 72nd. So some of the, the consideration that the Planning Commission is asked to consider here is, is the density appropriate, 64 units an acre? Is that height appropriate? Again, Mick did comment about the height, felt that it was appropriate and that it's, it is pulled away from the single-family homes and brought up to the street. Consider the, the Southdale principles, the give-to-get. What the applicant is proposing here is more creative site plan, improved pedestrian circulation, and with the additional bike accessibility, a high-quality development. They're saying they would add that detail to the plans. Increased public space, underground parking, which is another goal of the Southdale area planning efforts. A significant contribution to the affordable housing at 20%, where our policy is 10%. They are suggesting sustainable design, and I believe they'll talk to that a little bit as part of their presentation. And again, a shadow study would be required as part of any formal application, given the height proposed here, and then that traffic and parking study. So with that, I will stand and answer any questions that you might have of me.
Planner Teague is standing and answering questions. Do we have questions? Commissioner Paulson?
Thank you.
So this, this property is currently zoned POD 1?
Correct.
What are other, some other permissible uses in POD 1?
Yes, it's primarily office. We do allow some limited retail, depending on the size and scale of, of the site or the, the building where office might be located. But it's really primarily office-type uses.
And that would include medical office?
It would include medical office, yes.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lee?
Carrie, on that first rendering, I'm just curious, it showed the, the bridge. What's, what's the bridge connecting to? Is that, that's not part of this project, is that right? This one in the foreground?
Right here?
Yeah.
Correct. This would be over toward the Pinstripe site. So yeah, this building, there's no proposal or plan for anything on that side, at least that I'm aware of.
So it's just, that's just made up?
That is just made up, yes.
Okay. And?
Just showing a potential, what, what it might connect to in the future.
Okay. And then you said the bridge, this, this crossover thing is not part of the project. They're just kind of showing what could be. How about interior to the building? Was that understood, they would build those out?
Correct. They would build that out, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I had a couple of questions for you, Carrie. You showed the massing diagram, but also the, the applicant provided a stacking diagram. I can't remember if you showed that in your presentation or not. I'm, I'm wondering if you could, if you have that. Yeah, that's the massing, I believe. Or is that the stacking that you just showed? Actually, that might work.
That's probably the closest stacking that I had.
Perfect. Perfect. First of all, on the upper part of the diagram, what are those buildings behind? As you move towards the residential.
These buildings?
And the ones above those.
So these are duplexes?
Duplexes.
Off of the cul-de-sac here, and these are high-density residential apartments.
Okay. And then, and then secondly, in this diagram, the bridge looks like it's going, it's not going straight across France, it's going diagonally, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
The city owns a 20-foot easement over on this side, so I believe the thinking was...
I'm sorry?
The city has a 20-foot-wide easement that connects into the promenade. So I think the thinking is they could connect up to that, to that easement.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks. Commissioner Strauss?
The parking, is it all underground or?
Correct, yes.
We're not really showing any surface parking yet? Okay. We didn't even...
There is a small one.
Okay. Okay. But primarily, it's being handled by an underground parking facility?
Correct. That's correct.
Any, any other questions for Planner Teague? Commissioner Lee?
Carrie, just, just so that, you know, everyone understands, what is the approximate timing for the finalization of this Greater Southdale Area Small Area Plan?
Yes, excellent question. So as we know, that's one of our areas that, well, it's been under, under consideration for a little, well over a year. So we're hoping to move into the next phases, which is part of the comprehensive plan. What was described as phases three and four, when we outlined the whole, kind of the, the whole of the study process. Our goal right now in, in working with the, the co-chairs of the Greater Southdale Area Work Group, we're working on the consulting team, primarily Bico, our main planning consultant for the entirety of the comprehensive plan, but then still utilizing Architecture Field Office and Mick Johnson. So our goal is to have that contract before the city council in September. Assuming that's all approved, we would then begin the process of, of completing the comprehensive plan. So we would start in October with the goal of concluding in the June, July of 2018 timeframe.
So by June or July, we would have that final area plan and would kind of know what was, what was envisioned more formally, besides just these guiding principles we've been giving to the developers?
Yes, that's the goal.
Now, my recollection was, this, this process for the small area plan started two years ago, almost?
Yes, probably is closer to two.
Okay, but primarily to look at the west side of France, is that right?
That's how it started, yes, as a result of the proposal that was, the project that was proposed for this site.
Right, exactly. This was the site.
It expanded, yes.
Yeah. Do you know if there is going to be recommendations coming out that will address the west side of this, of, of France? Because I think that's because it abuts the residential areas.
Yes, the west side is included in the study area.
It is. It will. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Carrie, I have one. I think the height of this building is 650 feet, is that right?
160.
160. Okay. How many, how many single-family homes do you think there are within, say, 160 feet of the property?
Within 160 feet? So the single-family homes are located here north of 72nd, and then there's some in here. So that, that 900, or the 600 number, now, let's see, are you talking about within the, the 14-story?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably, if I'm just counting the homes to the north here, it's probably 10 to 20?
20 homes?
That's, that's probably high, closer to 10.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, if you bring the applicant up? All right. Let's have the applicant.
My name is Jamie Stolpsted, and I thank you for your time and for considering a very ambitious proposal. I just want to make a couple of comments, and then I recognize this is a very complicated site and a fairly complicated proposal, so we'll have some folks to talk through in detail, and I look forward to your questions. If I may, I'd like to just preface some of that detail with a little bit of discussion of the opportunity that I think this presents and some of the risks that it presents. So the opportunity, I think, is the chance to develop a large scale of land in a comprehensive way. When this opportunity came through my uncle, who's a longstanding resident of Edina, it became clear to us that there's an opportunity for a better outcome if both parcels were comprehensively developed. So we think that's a very significant element of the approach. We also think that the timing of this presents an opportunity because it's clear to at least our team that things are changing. And so the proposal that you have is a very deliberate effort to present a different quality of life and a different lifestyle. And so it does break ground, it is different, and that's intentional. We think that there is a segment of the population of Edina and a segment of folks who would like to live in Edina who don't find the opportunities that they're looking for. So this type of project, which offers greater scale, which is focused on a different type of mobility than the automobile, we think is the kind of development that should occur more often in Edina. We think a lot of the complexities of the site have been thoughtfully brought together into a mixed-use environment that will be appealing to a lot of people. So I would say that's a key element of the opportunity. Another interesting element of the opportunity, and one that I want to make clear, is the overall passageway of the regional bike trail. We originally identified this opportunity and attempted to deliver as executable a program as possible by working with adjacent property owners. So it was our very intention to bring a very achievable, doable project that would span a county road. Unfortunately, that effort did not come to pass. So we submitted, we withdrew, and we had to redraw. So some of the images are unfortunately not completely clear, and the initial intention and the expectation was to be able to deliver both the launch and the landing of a bridge under a controlled ownership situation. Unfortunately, we don't have that, so what we can deliver is the launch. And that's our intention, to bring the infrastructure to launch over a bridge, and we've had good dialogue with parties on the other side of the street, but we do not own the other side of the street, and we cannot control that. But there is a very unique opportunity for the city because it controls an easement on the other side. So we believe there's an opportunity to connect from one side of France through this project, benefiting from the integrated development of 7200 and 7250, and achieve an important policy objective, an enhancement of safety, an enhancement of access, a really important connectivity for the community. And so that's an opportunity that unfortunately, I can't say we can do every piece, and we have control of every piece, but I'm very confident it can be done with the support of the city. Let me turn then briefly to the risks. There are a lot of concerns and challenges with this particular area. There are concerns by residential neighborhoods, there are concerns by a very significant population of renters who are in the cedars of Edina. We've tried to engage constructively to understand the concerns. We think we've reflected creative solutions. We're continuing to have those dialogues. We continue to be open to ways to make this a better project and to address those needs. But perhaps beyond those specific risks, I think the risk that I'm concerned about is the risk of boring, same, missed opportunity. It's very rare in a city like Edina, in this particular location, to have the opportunity to develop this much land. And so I think we should seize the opportunity, and we should try to avoid missing and doing something that looks like everything else, that's five-over-one apartments, and it's just boring. So those are my introductory comments. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Dean DeVolus.
Good evening. Aaron, you want to help get me set up? Thank you. Dean DeVolus, TJ Architecture, 509 Ridge Road, Edina, Minnesota. So Carrie gave a nice, concise presentation. I'm going to go through the highlights and walk through the project and go through some of the elements of it to give a better understanding to the Planning Commission. Keys, all right, keys are used to forward, so. So anyways, the site, as you well described, is a combination of 7200 and 7250 France Avenue, which really solves a lot of problems putting these two sites together, because you saw the... sites together, because you saw the multitude of 7200 proposals had the problem of access, access off 7200 and access off of France. So, bringing these two together really picks up a lot of that burn that occurs. This page sort of, sort of talks about what Jamie's introduction was, the idea that can there be an evolution in terms of Edina not only dealing with the automobile, but also dealing with pedestrian connectivity, bicycle, other aspects that can it grow beyond. And the Southdale Plan is sort of part of that striving, and probably the original godfather of all this thing was the original Centennial Lakes Development, which was started to create that large connection that runs through the whole area, and what we're trying to build on is how to make that connection and stretch it out and get it beyond sort of its internal area to start making connections to neighborhoods beyond that point. So, if you look at the overall area, you know, our site's in the middle, and this purple line represents a regional trail that had a pecan as big, and this represents the internal trails that Edina has developed within it on the site. And this goes a little bit closer, so you get the idea, as Carrie mentioned, high-density apartments here, duplexes here, seniors here, single-family up in this corner in terms of its proximity to the area, and then office straight along France Avenue in that area. And then, right across the street is this Julie, Edina has, but part of the problem is there is no real connectivity into it. It's certainly been entombed behind a lot of various commercial and retail developments, and so it sits buried within the site. So, part of the idea is how can we start getting this thing to branch out and tie into the neighbors of the west and so forth, so it becomes an asset that has more impact on the city itself. And so, as Carrie mentioned, President's owner is, you know, the office P O D. But this is, Keen, I know the, if you look at Southdale Avenue, I'm just going to hit this, get to give is what we're trying to do with this, that by playing with different densities to create much for a public sphere. Edina cultural preference activity, which is the culture which I call Centennial Lakes, district function, create a district that starts a tie-in, comprehensive connections and movement, a big deal, and this is really, I think, is really starting to make steps towards that, as some of the previous other projects I've worked on. Transitions in the site, health, there's a wellness component of this, innovation, live, livable land use precincts and economic vitality. And those are sort of the portions we sort of basically thought is a good foundation. I think Southdale Plan has started on that presence of it. This is the ideal, the Nine Mile Creek Regional Bike Trail, and it's very substantial. Right now, it doesn't seem to have the impact, but if you look at the bridges being built over Crosstown, over 100, the boardwalk, 15 miles of almost solid activity, today it looks relatively overused and invisible. But, in the future, its use is going to intensify quite more as the connections and linkages are made. If you look at the Greenway in Minneapolis, which is a bikeway, and the impact it's had on the neighborhoods that are all the way in through Phillips, all the way through Lake The Isles, it's quite substantial. This has the same scale and the same potential. And my presentation's broken into three parts, and we get to it. Ryan's going to talk about the bicycle portion, and Aaron's going to talk about sustainability. Catherine had to go back to New York, so he's going to be the stand-in for that portion of it, so. I forgot to mention, I'm just going to touch lightly on this and let them go more into the depth of it. But you get an idea of this linkage, and this is a whole trail, and the bridges, and this is sort of the missing link, you know, once you get across 100, it sort of doesn't really go anywhere until you start going across. And so, also an aspect of this process, can we tie this in? Can we build this project a third of the bridge? If you think of the bridge in three pieces, a third of the cost is in the approach. A third of the cost is getting over France, a third of the cost is the approach going their side. So, what we're basically saying is we're getting a third of this vision put in place by tying it through a project, make that approach, because that's be 3% to work with the bikes and all of that, and the AD that was mentioned on that aspect. Southdale Air Plant, west side of France, sort of a key parcel as part of setup of that vision. Height, we're 159 feet, okay, around 160, which you can see for scales, the western's like 215, one Southdale's 115. So, we sort of fall between these two to give you sort of a comparison. These other buildings that are within this district that have been put together on that, to give an idea where that falls. Existing site, it is two worn-out buildings that are both well past their lives, and the development of these is invettable because no money's been put into these buildings for many decades, and their usable function is done, and I'll have pictures of that. The site used to be a gravel pit. That's why I can get the parking underground, to get all 720 parking spaces underground. Sounds palsy, the 6,000 that Shake Shack's working with, but it does fit the Edina code, as Carrie mentioned. And the fact I can get them all underground except the small convenience lot really changes the plane of this project to make sort of a green aspect on it. Scale, one Southdale, and this site's about comparable, sort of getting an idea of sort of the scale of the land and how it fits to a comparable development in the area. These are just the surveys that just show the two together. This is aspects of the site. One thing we're blessed with, and this is sort of the good, the bad, and the ugly of the site, there's a very intense green corridor that has grown up on the edge of the site. Our intention is to keep that intact and enhance it, and that creates a wonderful buffer, and that runs along the western edge of the site between the duplexes and the site. And it's a green barrier that has evolved over time, that really is an asset of the site to create separation. It's grown quite thick and lovely in terms of that. So, the idea is to maintain that and enhance it. Other aspects, here's the ugly. This is the connection between the apartments and the ramp, and this is a ramp inside, and this is sort of just demonstrating that. This ramp is failing. It's at the point, it is now temporarily short in multiple locations, it cannot exist anymore. And this development, the building is actually built on top of the ramp, it's all integral, so unfortunately it has to come down, and with the adjoining owners, we'll be able to resolve this and enhance this green corridor in here, as opposed to sort of the concrete Grand Canyon that exists on the western end of the site right now. And then, this is what the Petersons have, which is Edina Cedars, and that rich landscape and ideas will work with him and continue that through the site and build on his, what I call, tradition of really creating a very nice green environment, build upon that. And so, nice that we have an owner that has that abilities to it. Project itself, and I'll go very quick, this is like, sorry, idea of previous folks actually was interested, but, so really, this is the project that is set up with the idea, the taller portion would be glass, the lower street level would be all glass and transparent and stone base, and then a stack of metal material to sort of make up the building, and it's broken up in very small masses and pieces to scale it. I did not go through all the architectural deal throughout the views because I sort of want to get the input of council, commission, see if the basic direction's right, because from that, we would enhance this considerably more in terms of the detail and elements and all that. But the idea that this is a wellness center, apartments here, retail down here, and ownership housing in this portion, if everything times out right. The project is going to be built in two phases. The tenants on 7250 are very interested in becoming part of this project, and that makes up the wellness center. So, it's sort of good as we're preserving the quality tenants have of the building. They're going to move over into the new structure here. When this move is complete, then this part is built. So, it'll be built in two halves, allow that transition for the existing tenants on that. View down France, as Carrie mentioned, five guys is on your right over here, to give you a reference. This is looking north on it. And then, the connectivity, the idea that is the bike trail and pedestrian trail, because it'll be dual purposes, and that's one reason we put in some of the sharper curves to slow the bike, where we have a difference with Three Rivers. They're designing theirs to have bikes move at 12 miles per hour, which is pretty fast. We want to slow them because we want to make this have a dual purpose of pedestrian and bicycle. If you think of the High Line in New York, we sort of see this having that same kind of element of making this connectivity over and taking the elements of Centennial Lake and getting it through and across so that it is accessible on that. These yellow lines, which hopefully you can see clearly, clearly, Carrie, are bicycle pedestrian connections we want to bring through the project. There's an option here to go through the trees as a boardwalk, or an option to come through, we have a two-story gateway, and the project is sent to come through this way to make that connection. But the idea is that development is porous so that it's not a wall from the community of actually connection through that allows people to get to this asset, which is Centennial Lakes and all the other functions there in terms of retail grocery store and so forth. And yet, tie connection over France, that's along a major regional trail that's already having a considerable investment being put into it already on that. The basic massing, Carrie described, three back here, four here, six, six and 14, with the idea of the massing pushed to the far northeast corner of the site. The height was sort of based off a view line from duplex, I'll show that in a later diagram. So, the idea is that it transitions very low and then builds up to the highest point in that far corner. That seems appropriate because that's a major intersection, a lighted controlled intersection, and the idea in that all our traffic will come off either Gallagher or France, and that 72 has no access points to the project at all, which the neighborhood would really appreciate it. And I'll go through the neighborhood meeting we have on that process. This is sort of the basic enclosures Carrie went through. 20% affordable within the project. You can see the unit counts, there's about 39,000 of wellness in the first billion, about 10,000 in first phase, and about 10,000, and the other units are 121, 145. The range is based on the size of units. If we go to condominiums in phase two, and we talked about the affordability, we'll still have the 6% median income for 20%, but what we hope to do in their phase if goes that route. Centennial Lakes had a very creative program that had a funnel set up that if you were resident of Edina and you bought a condominium, they didn't have his income restricted, they may or may not, I don't think they had at the time. They gave you a $10,000 down payment that was sort of give over five years to live there. Hopefully, if we do have an ownership component, we'd work with the housing foundations that maybe some of the owners, maybe some of the condominium portions have an affordable ownership component built in there also. So, that may be an idea. So, you may see where we have 60-some odd units, some may be on the rental side, some may be in the ownership, but we'll see how that evolves. But that's a commitment, we want to work through this. Again, here's our site plan. It'll have a high idea of green aspects to it, and Aaron will run through that idea. The bridge lands on city right-of-way right here. We're going to build this connection, a third of the bridge, that's part of the project. It'll be flexible. If Macy's develops in time or something happens, this bridge could go straight across. But we just right now said, we believe enough in the idea strongly that there's an easement that allows this, that the city owners allow this to happen and to occur. And the idea of, again, this green enhancing and bringing it all the way through here is the idea, and multiple green roofs. Again, all the parking is underground, except a small convenience delivery lot. So, the idea is that 700 cars are below grade, and that the whole surface becomes a green element, and as Carrie mentioned, really enhance this pedestrian environment, provide a comprehensive housing community that has wellness, retail restaurants, and a connectivity, and a variety of housing affordability is really sort of the idea that we want to give this, that brings from rental to the potential of ownership on it. And again, this just shows the same thing, all our traffic is through here. This is how everyone gets through it, off France or off of Gallagher, nothing off of 72nd at all. And again, the pedestrian connections I mentioned before, bicycle connections run through the project. Parking, below ground, one level, two level. Again, it's been excavated for us fortunately because it was a gravel pit, so it works well on that aspect value that occur. And this may have been the stacking diagrams you were referring to. This is a main plane, which was a combination of housing, amenity, wellness center, retail. And then, working up the project, wellness center, housing components now into the housing levels as they go up, building drops off, and finally, the single element in the corner on that. These are just white model views without architecture, just to give the overall, what I call, high-level massing without all the detail pouring in to make sure this works. But the idea is that the height is in this corner, and then it goes six and steps and broken down, and even just masses to scale it, which will be very critical with the elemental podium. And what, you know, Mick Johnson mentioned also, we incorporate, and that's a view from France, that's a view on the corner at 72nd and France. The interior of the project, which will be very green, picking up on what the Petersons have done, we want to bleed that through the development. This is a view showing the commitment of how this pedestrian bikeway would weave through the project, would be integrated to it, which would be unique and really provide, like I say, sort of an aspect and a landmark at Edina, making this connection across. Back on 72nd, looking at it from France on that aspect, and this is a view showing that the bikeway would, pedestrian would come through and cross through the project on that. Oops, sorry, went too quickly. This is the study in which, how we deal with it. This section is taken basically from the duplexes across the site, and the idea is that the three-story portion with the tree sending it is to provide the screening so that the nearest homes or duplexes do not view the tower. So, the idea is that, and that's how we sort of help establish that connection and placement of this to really mass that mass, allow transition echoes from two-story to three-story, four, six, and then finally to the tallest portion in that corner, and use the view lines, those are the elements to establish that. So, you sort of develop what I call a transition of scale from low to high across the site. Shadow study, we don't affect any homes with it. So, we actually did a shadow study on our own, just to test the height, test the model, to make sure we stayed within the realms of not affecting anybody with casting a shadow as part of the project. Community meeting, we had a community meeting two days ago, 40 residents showed up, about half of them signed in, the other half went for the cookies first, and it was actually a very good conversation. Meeting lasted, we stayed there about, because people asked questions afterwards. So, I'm going to go through the highlights and sort of bunch. This was the invitation we sent out to everyone right here. So, issues that were mentioned, very appreciative of 72nd that we weren't connecting to there, but they're worried for the overall development of the area because they see 72nd going over clearly as a cut-through and how to address that. And they sort of requested, could you please go to planning commission and commission and state that for us, that we'd like some consideration of dealing with that, because that was a concern they had on there. So, that's the traffic flow, and I explained the traffic study, what Carrie mentioned, and what would be happening. But I want to bring that forward. They were very appreciative of the buffer on the western edge and the green connection and the preservation of that. That was a big deal, that that was going to be kept enhanced and developed even further. And so, I'm sorry, giving the highlights off the deal. Obviously, density of the area on there, in height, you know, some of the discussion, how much, what makes sense, they like their transition, but is it too much and so forth? So, that was part of the discussion on there. Wellness, health of the community was a big deal, providing those services and incorporating. That was sort of a surprise that came out, that they really sort of hit upon that aspect and found that sort of big deal. And this one was another major one, connectivity and safety. A lot of residents are spooked of France Avenue and crossing it. They do not see the improvements, you know, those three corners that were enhanced with the lights and stuff as having any meaning. And my apologies to city planners that may have worked through that in the past, but they just say, we need something more dramatic to connect, because they see France as a major divider, and the street needs to be addressed somehow. They thought the bridge and activity was a good move, and started that discussion to really say, how do we connect Southdale, how we deal with trying to tie our community together on that. So, I will now quickly go through the landscape, which, public realm, private realm, and So I will now quickly go through the landscape, which public realm, private realm, and private, I mean, the green natural environment and a hybrid in between. And these are just images of the different aspects. It plans to be very intense, highly landscape development, and are allowed to this because of the parking underground, which can really make a nice. So I'm going to conclude right now and turn it over to Aaron, who's going to go through sustainability, and Lou Catherine, then Ryan's going to wrap up with the bike self. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Aaron Johnson, project manager with DJR Architecture. Thank you for taking the time to hear us tonight. I'm going to briefly talk about the developer's approach to sustainability. We're very fortunate that we do have a member of our development team that is committed to sustainability, and that does come from the development side, not the design side. And the developer does have an approach to sustainability, which is what I'll be explaining, and not just, you know, a couple attempts at sustainability. So we've heard Dean and the developer speak already about the importance of mobility and connectivity of the site, which play into wellness. And obviously, sustainability is a huge factor in providing wellness in the community that you live in and your personal health. Now, a second factor of this sustainability approach is where is a holistic water approach. And what we mean by that is we are committing to green and gray water systems, not just a green roof here or there, or not just a vegetation swale, but actually putting all the pieces together to collect, use, and send back water to our environment. We know Lake Cornelius in the area and other water districts. So the last piece of our sustainability approach is creating a high-performance building. Now, there's a lot of approaches that we have to this right now. One being geothermal. We could potentially do geothermal on a site that we know Southdale that we were just talking about originally is the very first geothermal mall in the whole world and has that historic credibility. The other is we would be using solar and potentially solar heat recovery, or sorry, sewer heat recovery, which would be pretty avant-garde. Redina, I don't know if it has been done in Edina. Maybe you guys know. And it is unfortunate that our member of the development team isn't here tonight because I, along with her, have been working very closely to actually bring the brightest and the best to Edina in terms of MEP engineers and civil engineers that can actually pull this off, you know? Because these are real aspects that we are committed to delivering for the city. As you heard Mr. Stolpstead speak tonight about something different, we believe the sustainability aspect will bring this different lifestyle and improve quality, even though I tend to view Edina as pretty good quality already. But with that, like I said, I was just going to provide a brief idea of sustainability. And I'm going to introduce you to Ryan, another member from DJR, which will talk about the bike aspect and how far that goes in this project and our commitment to that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Let's see, you've got... Sorry? All right, there we go. Here's the biking, the pedestrian portion of the project is meant to be inclusive and accommodating. From the early stages of the design, we didn't want this to be an afterthought or meet minimum requirements, like with the sustainability. Our plans show that the integrating of the non-automobile transportation infrastructure, it was one of the driving forces of the design. The path, you see, it connects two, two trails that are kind of overlapping at one time. One being the Nine Mile Creek Trail that was addressed earlier, and the other that is part of Edina's master plan for biking and pedestrian. I'm going to start by, I think, walking through the trail itself. Excuse me. When, let's see, traveling from west to east, we'll kind of go up through here. Let's see if we can get the mail. All right, let's say we're going along this way. Traveling from west to east, the cyclist or pedestrian would turn north, going up the ramp and along the west side, and turn back and go through the building. This was addressed as a switchback and does have concerns that Dean showed to address for slowing down the bicycle traffic. Then you would go over France Avenue at this point and ramp down to the proposed land with the transportation easement. And from there, you would head either north to the Southdale or going east to Richfield. There was also this investigation that we are exploring currently of having the two neighborhoods meet from the north and the south, that would be two potential options running through the site. Adjacent to the ramps in the plaza along France Avenue would be areas for biking infrastructure and business. And there is, so we have, right here, we have examples of a bike fixation with bike-specific vending machines. And if you recognize the model there, that would be me. There's other bike, thank you, parking that we would be integrating into this. So with the trails being used for multiple reasons, the commuter can have access to maintenance at all hours of the day with fix and wash stations. Cycling groups can have meetups, recreationalists can find refreshments, and advocate groups would have a place to do some outreach. And this is also an opportunity for e-bikes, which are gaining popularity in the U.S., would have a place to charge and store their bikes. When looking for feedback initially for this, I spoke with the Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota, and they seemed enthusiastic about the zone, the whole thing, not because this is quite a proposal, but because it shows a step in a direction that lets the Twin Cities, it shows that we're learning from the rest of the world that biking and other forms of active transportation are quite viable. And as a bike commuter myself, I think this is a kind of a good opportunity to work with the trails and kind of get and figure out how we can work with the city of Edina for working more biking into your master plan.
There's a lot there. So we're here for questions. Thank you so much. And for my original comment, please push us to create something great, and let's not settle for something mediocre. Thank you.
We still have questions.
Thank you. Are there questions? Commissioner Hobbs.
As far as the bridge goes, do you have any cost estimates for the bridge?
I have rough... What I've showed was a cable state bridge. Now, if you look at the ones that Three Rivers has built over 100, for example, those are about a, if you count the approaches and all that, about a $2 million bridge. If we do something more architecturally significant, we showed, for example, a cable state bridge in the renderings, that'll be closer to 3 million on that. So it's just a matter of scale. But that's sort of the basis of what it costs. And if you sort of take the bridge, like you say, and a third, a third of that cost in one approach, a third of the cost in getting over France, a third of the cost in the other approach, that's sort of roughly a million, a million, and a million if you look at it that way in that basis.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Hamilton.
The, I've heard comments on the longer portion that faces, what's the cross street there?
It's Gallagher.
Yeah, the shorter building.
72nd.
72nd, that's right, 72nd. And articulating that, I know you haven't gotten to that yet, but I think there's lots of, I don't think, for me, it's the height. I think it's access to grade. I think it's articulating that. It's all stuff that you do, you do really well. You do it on all your projects. I know you'll do it here. I know you've said you haven't gotten there yet. I think this is a real challenge about how to break that scale down and prevent it to the best of our ability from being the usual stickover precast, long extruded building that the world is used to and doesn't like. The sustainability piece, I think is hugely important. I think you're right on. I think it's where the world is. I think it's what we want to see. I think if you wait for the Edina comprehensive plan to come out, you're going to see a strong emphasis on sustainability. So perhaps one of the questions might be, as you've been able, at least in your graphics, to show how important the bike is and incorporating the bike, is there a way that you can be as dramatic and teaching and educational and positive about sustainability in the concept of the building as you are about the concept of the bike trail?
The answer is yes, and I appreciate that because, for one example, on West 72nd Street, you have a major sewer line, a trunk sewer line runs under it. We talked with Milner about, can we, because they plan to open the street and reconstruct that, to wrap it? So the geothermal, the idea is we'd wrap that sewer line with a transfer pipe water and take that heat and pull it off the sewer, which runs at 60 degrees, and pull it in development. So it's double skinned, the same way. So what we've been doing, Jamie and I, the rest is going around looking. So we didn't just look locally, but naturally find engineers that got this stuff. And when we bring them in, we, exactly what you're saying, we want to build on that. So we found someone that understood our thinking in terms of solar, in terms of that type of sustainability, in terms of those aspects, to build on that because they are out there, they're relatively rare, but there's more and more of them to really start thinking of those aspects. And so that's a very conscious effort, but you're...
And we'll bring Catherine. She runs sustainability for Skanska and is probably one of the top five people in the country, and she'll be here when she goes back from vacation next week.
I'm a bad substitute.
But I think the challenge on the design side is to not let that be underground. It has to be underground, but how do we know that it's there? How do we understand that? How do you teach the rest of Edina, these are possible ideas and they can be useful to you?
No, and your point, it's something that came from the community meeting last night, two nights ago. The site, they said, what do you do about groundwater? I said, we're blessed on the site. Why? Because those are gravel pit. It's sand. What's lucky about this site is because it's sand, we can set up a perforated pipe system. When you take water through sand, you purify it. So literally, we can take that water and recycle it back into the groundwater system. If it was a clay site, it couldn't offer that option. So one of the things we had in depth with some of the neighbors says, here's a building where we can take the site, send the water back through the sand, filtrate it back into the aquifer, which Edina relies on an aquifer system, and bring it back up again. So not only do we separate the gray water from the storm water, but then we can filter it through this because this is in the middle of that dense sand area of Edina that since since Centennial Lakes got created because the sands were mining out. This is part of it. So we'll bring those aspects up, it's just like, I got to educate because we do want to make that point itself at the community afterwards, that time really talk to people through these details. But you're absolutely right. You got to be able to get it so it has a wider audience that people understand the drive behind this. So thank you.
Commissioner Strauss.
Jim, I just, I'd like to compliment you. This is, as a project, has been as effective and comprehensive of a presentation as, in my experience. The items that would be of concern, you really, whether you've answered on them, which I think for the most part you have, you've addressed them. And boy, I think you're right on track and it's obvious you guys are excited about it. And I could see where it's good reason to be. So yeah, I really, the things that came up, you do seem to have paid attention to. And I love the sustainability, the transportation part, the pedestrian, all those. I think also have visiting the High Line in New York City on my list here, so thank you.
And you know, one little fact in that, the projection by Three Rivers Parks is that when the bikeway is completed, it'll have 500,000 rides a year. Those are big numbers. And so, you know, and they've done a lot of studies to justify the expense of building those bridges you're seeing going across town, and six in the boardwalk and all the grief they went through. So they've been researching, this has a future ability of providing transportation alternatives. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Let me maybe add one little part of the opportunity. This is a really unique approach to addressing the connectivity, and it's an approach that I think captures the attention of the healthcare community and the corporate community in Edina. And there are ways to leverage that interest into dollars to help pay for parts of this
Any other question? Commissioner Bennett.
Oh man, I got a lot to say. Lot of great things first, so I think I was just going to kind of run through that. And since we have full discretion, I can get them all off my chest and I, so I'm sorry, but got to deal with it. I mean, first and foremost, with this regional trail, there's a couple of things to it. It's regional, so it's moving people from many different places. And so part of it is getting from point A to point B timely. So as much as I like the bridge, it does kind of, you know, it goes through your site kind of awkwardly compared to, you know, a straight line connecting you somewhere. So I wouldn't mind also highlighting that that could be an option to just keep it the same. And you have this option to go off, or you look at how you can work with Three Rivers to provide a bridge that's acceptable to them. I don't know if it's, you know, coming more on the south side of your site and just doing this slow bend, but then you can still go into your site, not rely on your site to get the grades that you need.
And what we looked at is try to round it out here. So we do plan to work with them and play with curves and see if there's a middle ground to come with, with the idea of keeping it slow enough to allow pedestrians to feel comfortable. Because remember, we're thinking this is dual-purpose, not exclusive bikes.
Policy tension between the speed and volume of bike transport versus the safety and tranquility of pedestrian access. And our approach is the latter. We're favoring me, my mother, others walking across France Avenue.
Yeah. And that's definitely what I commend and like about this project. I mean, you know, I'm an engineer, so I'm a bridge guy. So to make bridges beautiful is kind of, you know, that's my language. It's a great way to make this a very iconic, not just the site that you get in project, but an iconic stance of like, hey, Edina cares about its bridges. It cares about getting people across a busy road safely and in an elegant way. So I really like that. Just the report that we read from Three Rivers was not really thrilling.
I agree. I was a little disappointed, but you know, we'll work from there.
So whatever you guys can do to get creative, to try to accommodate that, I still think there is a piece where if people are commuting, that they're not going to want to, you know, go through a whole site if they could simply cross the road, if the signals time right or whatever. And I don't know what that whole thing looks like, but that's my comments for the bridge. The 72nd, really love that. And also what the neighbor said, that there isn't a connection there. Some of the pictures you showed of one of the neighboring sites with that really nice landscaping, it seemed to be that was on the perimeter of their site. And at least from what you've shown, the sidewalk looks kind of lightly sprinkled with trees, and that's it. And then a large mass or whatever can be thought to step that mass back, like Commissioner Hamilton was mentioning, but maybe having a more pronounced green space as well.
Agreed.
And then, speaking of the, kind of to the green space, you know, from an aerial perspective, it'll look great and the things you're talking about are just, and the passion you guys have is what we could only hope for on the development side. But, you know, with green roofs, you know, it's providing quality to the environment, but more so quality to the tenants if they're going to be usable. to the tenants if they're going to be usable. And so I want to make sure that this kind of site, as it's broken up nicely and will have these connections, really activates, you know, those sidewalks and gets people to go in. And that seems like a green type of nice experience because it looks nice from above, but a lot of what we're seeing is green roofs. And then there's still a lot of hardscape on the outside and it doesn't, at least from the images, it doesn't seem activated yet or inviting to go within the site, except through that regional trail. So whatever you can do to kind of get people in from Seventy Second, I know there's that trail winding through the trees, but, you know, through the trees versus, hey, there's this buzz.
If I may, that illustrates another sort of policy tension. So there are some in the community, I can't, that favor this as the primary solution for the north-south connectivity. And there are some who do not like that and would prefer that all of that occur in here. So this is an important evolution of our thinking. So just as a heads up, and we're going to need to talk about that, the issue of the verticality of green is really important. So Catherine's spent a bunch of time in New York. I spent a bunch of time in New York. The inspiration, for what it's worth, is, is the multiple levels that you see when you see a more urban environment. And so the patios are places for green. The roof is a place for green. Looking down on the roof, looking down on the patios, looking up, this really isn't just building and landscaping, it's building and landscaping. That's our intention. It's expensive, but that's what we're committed to doing. And partly, that's the reason for the scale. We need scale to afford a great project.
Yeah. So what you're saying, it's not shown here that is coming. We certainly want to get the basic massing idea and say, does it make sense to commissioners, council members? And then we plan to really detail this up in terms of green roofs, green terraces, because the idea, and just what you said, you want to make the green roofs usable, not just being object. And so that is the intent of this is that. And the, why you say all the stuff and stuff, is to make those roofs alive, active, and environmental, to really hit on all those fronts. So that is an intent. And the intent to the, and that's why I showed pictures of Peterson's property, because our intent, you know, he, he was a great steward and took a very good lead, you know, I was impressed what he did. And Jamie has engaged with them. There, everyone's on the same page to continue that transition. He started, you know, traditional buildings, but very extraordinary landscaping to really believe that and bring that through that, both like you said, on horizontal and as Jamie mentioned, on vertical plane.
Well, and so what I just, I guess what I want to maybe just see emphasized more too is, you know, this project not just benefiting, you know, the tenants and the people who occupy it, you know, if you're up on a terrace, yeah, it's going to look great down. But if you're on the ground level experiencing it, you know, that same kind of caliber, it's just, it's just hard to tell now because from where you're at.
That's a fair criticism because like you say, we're early on, so thank you.
And then I, I think the whole, the whole green and the sustainability really answers a lot of things to me personally that a development of this size can do for the quality of life of everyone around. You know, it, this is enhancing the connections to the site and just bringing that better quality of life to, you know, nearby residents, users, or residents onsite. And, you know, that's, that's really important. And it's kind of hard for us to even see that in a lot of proposals. So thank you there. And as for the height, I, I like exactly what you're doing. It's kind of what we've been saying too. It makes sense to have the height right on France. You know, it's as far away from the lower, the, you know, the shorter dwellings, units, you know, northwest of there. As for the massing along Seventy Second, it, at least now with six stories and then it kind of steps down, it still seems like a long, you know, big monolithic type of thing. So I don't know if there is thought to, if a connection, as you mentioned, might go down the middle. If it could be a wide connection that, you know, it's almost like a, a two, three story tunnel with-
And there is, right here. You're, you're not seeing it. We did carve a three story wide, two story, sorry, wide break through this for exactly that. And so, you know, a lot of these self-expression. So the idea is that this has broken a lot of different masses and then there's a large two-story opening so that when people go and say, they can get glimpses of what's going on as opposed to like build a six-story donut around the whole thing and say, here you go. The idea is we really want to cut holes in this thing so people see the green element and feel comfortable traversing through the project.
The, the current evolution of this thought tries to take advantage of the somewhat low density to the north. So as you're driving southbound on France, there's a, essentially a bit of a green. And if you look through that green, the breezeway, which is hard to see here, I'm sorry, I'm pointing at something you can't see.
What do you see?
The breezeway is angled. So the view corridor, southbound on France, looks through the breezeway, looks into this. And this is that sort of inspiration of, of peaking, of, of discovery, of seeing more, seeing multiple layers, seeing beyond. And then the closer you get and the pedestrian experience, you're walking your dog and you come along and you see that, oh, what's that? You're drawn into it. So that's all-
Awesome.
Inspired, you know, in this, and similarly, and it's not really developed that well. Dean on this side? This, the fact that they're phased and so forth, there's an opportunity to do the similar thing through here. And it's really important that this porousness exists so people can experience the totality of the project, not just the outside and the inside. It needs to, you know, flow through.
I think because maybe everything was one color, it's kind of hard to, hard to see. And two last things. So one, the affordability commitment to 20% is incredible. Thank you. And then last, you mentioned the phasing. And you said the tenants from the south piece are going to move to the north. But isn't that whole north thing going to be residential above the wellness? Or is there-
Yes, the base is-
Yeah, so the-
Wellness and above is-
So is that wellness just going to be kind of fade, they're going to use that space?
So the, if I may, so the question is about phasing and how this works. So the entirety of the first phase has minus two, then minus one parking, then grade, that would be done in concrete. Then along France, you go up to plus one, then plus two. So that all happens. And then above that, and then across over to Seventy Second and down is wood frame. The sequencing of the concrete base, then the wood, knocking wood with some good cooperation from the city, will allow us to get a temporary certificate of occupancy earlier to the wellness area, which is two floors of concrete construction, which then allows that to be ready for tenants to move in. The tenants that would be the first occupancy tenants would be coming from seventy-two fifty into there and others. And then that renders seventy-two fifty vacant. Then we can commence demolition and proceed with the next phase. It's really tricky, but we think we've got it largely figured out.
Sounds pretty well thought out. Great.
We're very motivated because we don't know how long can ramples survive. We kind of keep hustling on this thing.
Well, thank you guys a lot for your time and your answers. Can tell you're very passionate and the, at least to me, the passion kind of aligns with, you know, our, our guiding principles in this area and kind of what we hope to see. So thanks.
Thank you.
Excuse me, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Hobbs?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, someone who's been on the Southdale Working Group since the beginning for the last two years, I, I really am impressed by what you guys are doing. And it's, in my mind, really the best attempt at trying to adhere to our principles and kind of getting it as to what we're trying to do, not having the same stuff, being innovative. So I, I really hope you can pull it off because I think this is the kind of thing that will really help us out in the city. And I, and in terms of, you know, the bridge, yeah, I think there are, I would like to talk to you guys at another time. There, there are ways in terms of funding at the state level that might be able to help out with something like that that I know a little bit about. So something, that shouldn't stop us. I mean, that's not, for three million bucks, that's not, shouldn't be a big deal. But no, I think you guys did a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I want to give compliments. This Southdale Airplan gave us a roadmap to work against and sort of allowing this to occur, you know. And so in some ways, it's complimentary to each other because of the work you've done that's sort of allowed us to do this work. And it's really helpful because we sort of say, we know where the parameters are, we know where the opportunities are, and this has made this happen. So the Southdale Airplan is laying a good foundation, you know, between Avenue France, this and other stuff. It's starting to become real. And that's sort of a compliment for your two or three years of grinding through this thing and stuff. So, you know, thank you for your efforts on your side of the table.
Commissioner Lee?
I just want to echo what Commissioner Hobbs said. I, I think it's the first project actually that I've seen that is actually treating beyond your own site and looking at it holistically. So thank you. And I hope other developers take note because this is exactly the kind of thing we're looking for. I do hope that you're successful, but in, in that light, I also want to point out a few things or at least to ask a few questions. All right. The tree barrier that we've been talking about back there, you had a diagram that showed the visibility angle.
Yes.
Are you saying that, that the trees are acting as the barrier or will effectively shield the view of that, the taller portion of the building?
Both, the two combinations of that.
The three-story portion and the trees working in conjunction, because if you do a lower scale building, it's actually the other way on this. There it is, I went right past it. So the idea is that the barrier is one part of it, but obviously there's winter in this climate. So the idea is that the low three-story portion also guides as a site cut off from the taller portion. So really using two things, a lower scale building and the trees to accomplish that goal.
Oh, I see. The buildings themselves will, so the most they will see is the top of that shorter portion of the building. Okay. And on the backside, what is the height? And that is going to be the bone of contention right there, where you border those, you're calling them duplexes back there.
So this is, so this part here is a three-story portion. So it's about thirty-six-ish feet along the backside.
And then it steps up?
And then it steps up once you get up to here to four and then to six and then the tall part.
My sense is that is, is, is still very, very close to the back of those duplexes. So I don't know, I, I think your angle is very interesting on the Seventy Second side. I wonder if there's some way you can kind of still play around with that and do a little shifting back there.
Twists? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I see what you're saying to develop a, keep that geometry idea to start to give relief here.
Yeah, that pulls it away a little farther. That's just one thought.
Yeah. And then, and then one other idea we may play with too is that, you know, I do this as double loaded. We may make this a single loaded, which narrows a building. So between the angle and that may get us there.
Yeah. The massing diagram you showed, if you could pull that up, I think the stacking, stacking diagram, I want to, I think that's what you called it. One thing I wanted to point out is the duplexes that you are backing up to. Actually, there is still a single, two single family homes, I believe, right at the opening of Bristol Court.
Am I going the wrong way? Of course.
And the remainder of the homes that are duplexes are, I'd say primarily one story. Yeah. So in, in there, you're showing them as, they almost look like they're the same height as the, is it cedar?
Yeah, they're one and two story. This is a, this is a two and a half story, three-story walk-up apartment. These are one and two-story homes. So-
Yeah, primarily one story with big roofs. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll get this, you know, we built this to just give some scale, but I agree, we'll build this.
So what solutions come to your mind for that relationship?
Well, I'm just saying that I think that you have to keep in mind that they are, they are still very small scale. And obviously they have peaked roofs, you know, they're not like little mini apartment buildings.
Yeah, this was a sort of a simple diagram, but when we come back.
Yeah. And I think, here's the thing. I think that when residents look at this, they go right to where they know the houses are and they focus on things like that. So get that part right.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I wanted to ask a question about Seventy Second Street. Can you explain a little bit what was your theory behind sort of tilting it like that and then but can leveraging it? Because in most cases, we're talking about going opposite, right? It sticks out and then you step back.
Personally, I think that good projects are interesting and good projects draw people in and kind of surprise them through the journey. One very traditional, I think frankly, kind of boring approach is to have a one story, then something above, or you go back seven feet, then you get, we can do better than that. So the, the juxtaposition of the different angles of the, and sort of identifying the base as a two-story significant wellness center has a presence on France, that's important. But then frankly, the people who live above, they don't want to be right on France. So they want to have more balconies. So one of the benefits of this is that you're using the second floor roof, which is concrete, as essentially an extension of balcony opportunity. And you push it back. This is a sort of a whimsical detail. It could be different. And maybe that's an opportunity for more balconies. But the intention is to just add interest there. And the other interesting sort of, maybe too hoity perspective, but the interesting thing about having that angle is then that draws your eye into the breezeway. This doesn't do it justice, but the notion of the breezeway is as you walk through the breezeway, the glass angles of where you come into the building. So having this interesting angle, that interesting angle, and then this view corridor into the beautiful courtyard is very interesting, at least in my opinion.
Part of it, you know, it creates both a podium and a canopy. So at the entry in the breezeway. So sort of a combination of both, you know, respecting what I call the two-story base and idea, but giving some variety to it. So it has some interest on that.
When, when you, when you develop your, it would be great to have sort of a walkthrough scenario to, to understand that. So I would agree with Commissioner Bennett that it did seem a little monolithic. So it was hard to, to get that expression. A question about the wellness center. Who, who uses that and what is that?
A lot of philosophy tonight. So much of our space and our resources go to treating people who are sick. We're not focusing enough energy, in my opinion, on enhancing wellness. Part of enhancing wellness is to create an overall environment like this that promotes a lifestyle, that's a healthier lifestyle. And part of enhancing the totality of that experience is having an environment where you can have spas, where you can have the eye doctor, where you can have other things which are part of the ongoing health of the community. So the intention is this is not a treatment center. This is an environment where a collection, a curated collection of businesses that focuses on, on health are attracted. And they're attracted in part because the entire building celebrates health. The natural environment celebrates health. And there isn't much on France Avenue that celebrates health right now. So we would like to be that.
And so it's not just strictly for the residents?
No, no. So the, that 50-foot setback creates a great opportunity for people to stroll and then experience those tenants. We hope that the tenants embrace that as opposed to just sort of stand behind a door. But this is part of the evolution and things we can't completely control. But that's our aspiration.
Okay. Let me think. I have one more question. Oh, I, I just wanted to say that I think the hardest piece is going to be the height of that tower. As you know, right now, that is the first parcel on the west side of France that we're looking at. And you've already probably followed the other project very closely that was on the west side of France. We have not decided yet and we don't know what this, the Greater Southdale Area Plan is going to say about that. But in general, the buildings that you are quoting, it's true. We have other high riser buildings, but they, they tend to be over by York. So I just want to point that out. I think that's, there's going to have to be some real hard thinking about what that height really needs to be because it's a great project, but-
And, and the, some of the initial feedback was very encouraging at the community meeting. Height was not a word that was a prominent discussion. Traffic was a prominent discussion. Height was not prominent.
That's great. Well, that's interesting. That's, that's surprising. And I just wanted to say thank you for hosting that neighborhood meeting because I think that is key. If, if you can get to the neighbors and explain it- If, if you can get to the neighbors and explain it, uh, residents, I think everyone, everyone, I don't believe people are against change. Everyone understands that's coming. Um, and so, I think it's just really bringing them along, and I think sometimes we just do that, for whatever reason, a little too late in the game, so I appreciate that.
So, what we tend to do is, once, you know, assuming we survive, uh, console, we want to have a second neighborhood meeting with, you know, the discussion we've had with you and the changes and more defined graphics to walk it through even further. So, our ten is to do it again, to bring them, like I say, as you said, bring them along and have, keep these discussions going. Because there was a lot of, you know, would I give credit? The residents really were very thoughtful about what the future of Edina wants to be, and it wasn't like, we don't want denser, we don't want this, you know? There were some knee-jerk reactions, but there was a lot of discussion of, what do we want to live in? Do we have a walkability? What's our, can we want to be in the future? What do we want to live in? We want to have something that is greater than just sort of, a sort of a diverse parking, you know, diverse environment, just parking lots and strip malls. So, that, that's really soaked in, maybe it's through the work of the Southdale area study, or it's maybe just their awareness of evolutionary environment, but a lot of people are very thoughtful on those kind of concepts, and it was actually, you know, a great surprise and excitement that, that's what came across out of, out of that meeting.
Great tear. Thank you.
Any other commissioners, uh, Commissioner Jones, hold on a sec, Jimmy, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Bennett, you have more?
Add one thing to what Commissioner Lee brought up, and I forgot to mention it too, but about the height, at least is the one thing you guys kind of showed more architecture to, and, you know, it's a very elegant, unique kind of building for that area being predominantly glass, and I think, well, I mean, some of it's similar to other buildings, but that whole thing being like that, it's very unobtrusive compared to some other things that, you know, you see around town, so just commend you on the, the unique architecture and kind of how it blends with the sky.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, I have a few questions of a variety, last perhaps and least, this is a great place to start. Is this the, is this the appearance that you expect, or is this just a, a representative possibility?
Um, we would spend a lot of time in what's called design development, and that would take these concepts and refine them and have an iterative process on cost. This is where there's, it's like decorating, there's a lot of personal preferences. The basic aspiration is to go from heavier to lighter, to go from more solid to more transparent. The reaction that I have to this level of evolution is it's, um, it's a little bit too monolithic. So, as you travel down France, I think it's important that the, the facade articulation depict smaller building units. So, the, um, the shapes and the relationship of shapes should allow us to very elegantly create at least two portions, uh, from Seventy-Second to the midpoint, and two portions from the midpoint to Gallagher. And the very least, that level of articulation is important, and then hopefully, a greater degree of articulation vertically, so that the, um, balconies and the changes material from concrete base to stick can be emphasized. Said differently, this is perhaps fifty percent of the way we hope to get, and it is going to be somewhat economically driven. But, uh, this is indicative of something better, I hope, um, than what you're seeing, and that's definitely our intention.
My feedback on this item is probably a little more neutral than some of my other commissioners, my fellow commissioners. They, you know, you're getting a lot of very positive, which I'm fine with. It's harder, I, to me, my feedback is everything kind of sounds good, but it's hard for me to say, oh yeah, this is greater, this is bad, without seeing a more definite state, you know, and, and I would say the same about the sustainability, everything, it, it, it sounds good without seeing them more definite, it's harder for me to just go, to go be more positive.
Uh, fair points, there's a lot here, and, um, we'll try to articulate better and, and more crisply, more of that richness, and give you more confidence that these are achievable and the rationale and so forth.
Please don't take that as a negative.
No, it's a fair statement. We sort of put on a loose shirt, just as it doesn't fit, doesn't feel good. Now, we plan to really tailor it, so you're absolutely right, and when we come back, it will have a lot greater degree of views, detail, things like that, to really start describing its aspects. It's like, you know, I sort, we sort of want to get enough so you understood it, but I was nervous if we just waved in so much detail in the beginning, we'd be here all night. So, trying to say, what's a fair level for a sketch plan to say, here's where we're heading? Do you like the direction of it? If it's yes, then we'll continue enhancing it further and better.
One, one thing I, I, I do tend towards the positive on, although I'm not fully sure, is the, if you were to put in this property here, in this area, if you were to put a taller building, I think you picked a good location for a taller building because, um, it's farther away from the residential areas. I, I think you picked a very nice location if you're going to have a taller building in, in that, in the development area you're doing. Um, I think we still have to think about height in general and how it relates to different kinds of developments. One question I also had about that taller building, which is what I believe you consider Site B. One of your documents showed office slash residential for Site, Site B. So, I assume you're, that's still a decision that you're making, you're not certain whether you might go with office instead of residential?
The totality of the project, uh, we feel will be better if there's a mix of uses. The exact, uh, scale of each use really needs to be a function of the market. One of the benefits of the schematic approach and the porousness as you go up, uh, and the sort of transparency, is you could envision segments of these building going to even more uses. So, for example, you could have, uh, housing in the base at a relatively economic stick-built format, and then you could transition to post-tension for a tower, and a portion of that post-tension could be offices. Then above offices, it could be housing, and the, the flexibility of that structure, we think is a positive.
Do you think that's something that you will know at the time you come with plans, or is this something you will know af, you know, when development's happening?
So, if you remember the Avenue in France I took through, where we sort of defined the first phase and then sort of put guiding principles further on, the ten is, you know, the first phase will be very well-defined, which is Site A. Site B will be further developed, but in some ways, we'll keep it a little bit, because we're a little bit into the future, because we have to do that phasing because of the tenant movement. So, that, we'll have it sort of guided with high architecture, detail, and things like that, but also ask for a little bit of flexibility, because we're somewhat forecasting a little bit on that because of the nature of having to preserve the tenants and move them, so it'll probably be that same approach as Avenue in France in terms of that structure.
All right, so my, my following question for that may be more for city staff than you, but perhaps maybe for you. If, if that's the case, would a traffic study, if, if a traffic study were to be done, would it have to contemplate both possible uses?
Yes, we should. So, we probably would want to run multiple scenarios, um, one that would have more office space in it, as that would generate more traffic. So, we'd want to have a good handle on the maximum scenarios for the traffic study.
Okay. All right. Bike paths, the bike path's a big feature. Um, my feedback, I, I really like the, I, I really like your reasoning for why you're doing it that way, but, I mean, I just think that's, it's, you're coming from a good place, but I think it's prob, I, I don't like it, I don't like the outcome, and I'll, I'll tell you why. I, I would recommend that you sep, your reasoning is very good, you don't want to hurt pedestrians. That should be a, that should be a, a north star on these kind of things, but I think if that's the case, you should probably separate the paths like they do perhaps on the greenway. And I'll, I'll tell you, for at least two reasons. One is, um, one of the purposes for bike commuting is as a replacement for auto commuting. It's a, it's a little bit different than, than pedestrian commuting, and I, I think the time to where people are going is good. I think, and so I think if we have to slow the pedestrian, the, the bike commuters down, I, I think that would be publicly a negative. And I, second, and related to that, I think what would happen is that they'll make their own paths. They'll ignore your path, and they'll go somewhere else that we don't want them to go. And so, I would, I would recommend rethinking that. I, I, yeah, those, those are my comments on that. The property itself, the, you, you, you know, it sounds like you've done a lot of review on the, um, for stormwater management, which is a little bit above my schooling, but it's, you know, the little bit I've gathered over the years, you guys have thought about it, and you have some interesting ideas. Have you also verified though that the soils will be adequate for a fifteen-story building? You've done, you've done the work on that?
Yeah, well, it's fortunate, the reason why it's a gravel pit, because it's good soils. Um, and so, the answer is yes. In this area, if I go further, uh,
South?
Northwest.
Oh, northwest.
You know, I get closer to Lake Cornelia, the soils degrade quickly as I go in that direction. But this area, the Centennial Lakes, the gravel pit, the reason why it's a gravel pit, because it's the best foundation soils you can find, and that's how the money was made out of this site, because it had a beautiful sand, gravel texture, and that extends very deep. All our borings on this thing, it's just sand, straight down on this thing, which tells us, and that's your best foundation soil, because it come back, it provides stability. So, yeah, we're fortunate where we are, because when it provides, as I say, environmental filtration, and it's your best foundation for buildings.
I felt kind of sheepish asking you, I mean, you know, I, I, you guys, I know you probably thought about it, but I guess sometimes it's just good to ask.
No, no, we don't want the Leaning Tower of Pisa.
On, you, you provided us this document, and on page eleven, it looked like there were some reference properties.
Eleven, yes.
And then, I, I assume, but correct me if I'm wrong, these were provided to show examples of other taller buildings in the, in the neighborhood?
Correct, and to help you with scale, what does a hundred fifty-nine feet mean? So, we found others at, you're familiar with the site. Here's some examples of some taller and some a little bit shorter to give you a feel for that.
Have you given thought to any of these that you would prefer to be more like in appearance or in structure?
To say, none of them, forgive me, I don't want to be disrespectful, but we would want it to be a lot more, and, and Jamie described it lighter, more glass, more transparent. These are a lot what I call heavier masonry masses that, uh, dominate, you know? This has, is closest.
Which one is?
Minnesota Center. This one here is closest, more glass, when you look at the amount of,
Closest.
But you look at the amount of masonry, these appear heavy on the meat, this guy. So, what we want to get is more transparency in, in glass, in lighters, it meets a more ref, reflectivity, so it's more blue against blue, as opposed to like white against blue on there. So, that's really, so that's really the thought, but yeah, these aren't meant to be prototypes we're going to follow, it's more meant to help with scale.
I got in a conversation this morning with my eleven-year-old about the, um, Academic Health Center at the U of M, and, and, you know, got her feedback on that, let's put it that way. She didn't like it. Uh, so, and then I, a couple more questions about the property, the, um, wellness center, going back, just, you know, as, as we talked about earlier, it sounds like on the drawing board is to put a lifetime in, and how will your, how do you vision your facility differing from a lifetime? Because that's what most people think of when you.
Okay, so, um, that's a very good point. So, um, a wellness center in our view is not a fitness facility. Lifetime is a fitness facility. This is a facility that is zoned as office space, it has the physical characteristics of office space, it's the tenants that are focused and curated on a certain genre of activity.
So, on, like on seventy-five-hundred, for example, I don't know if there's seventy, I think it's seventy-five-hundred, there are several chiropractic and other kinds of, is that more along the lines?
Yeah, so, so, um, you know, people can have different views on so forth, but that's an activity that is trying to maintain lifelong health and enhance your health, as opposed to you're sick, you're coughing, you go in and you try to get medicine. We want to focus on the former and not the latter.
Yeah, I know, I know of Olympic athletes, actually, that have gone into that building, so that's probably your.
Yeah.
And then, and then finally, I had questions, uh, mostly about Mr. Stolpusted's business, a little bit different. I mean, are you developing, or have you developed other properties like this?
So, um, uh, I am, um, the fifth generation of Stolpusted Real Estate people in Minnesota. Uh, my uncle is, uh, and my father are the fourth generation. I had the good fortune of being raised in an environment that provided a lot of inspiration on the built environment. I wanted to be an architect. Uh, I've spent much of my career in other parts of the country, in other parts of the world, um, on value-add, on assemblage, on development. Uh, once, part of my career, I bought Southdale. I was the assistant asset manager for Southdale Office Center, I financed the Galleria, so I, I've got sort of connections to this particular, you know, stretch of, of property, but I'm very much, um, uh, an, an idea creator gathering of talent to accomplish things. I'm not one who is likely to be in the office trailer every week, going through every detail, but this sort of opportunity, this sort of confluence of trends, this unique set of difficult sellers, and the challenge of bringing the capital and putting all these pieces together, that's what I'm good at, and I'm really excited about this.
I'd have to say that I, that you've shown, with this project, you have, I mean, I, as I said, I don't know the project itself, but just the concepts, yeah, I, I, to the extent my fellow commissioners are saying this, I would agree wholeheartedly and with you that this is a really nice creative idea and the way you're putting everything together. So, if that's how you describe yourself, you're, yeah, you know, give you a good job review. Do you typically, what, after you build these properties, what typically happens to them?
Um, well, it takes a fair amount of capital to do things like this, and so you need to bring the right capital for the challenge. This needs to be more patient capital, and so my expectation is that this would be somebody who helps create it and owns it for a long period of time. The threshold, um, issue that we're going to face at some point is, does this get owned by the residents? So, if there's a market for condominiums, then that's who owns a big chunk of it. But the expectation right now is we need the right composition of owners that will carry this through for five, ten, fifteen years, that sort of thing.
Thank you, I think, that, very, very good. Any, I, I guess I would ask if you have other things to say, if any of my fellow commissioners have anything further? Well, thank you very much, it was a very good discussion.
Sorry to keep you a little tense, thank you for your feedback, it was very helpful.
Thank you. And, and that concludes our public meeting portion of the meeting. Next, we move on our agenda to correspondence and petitions. Are there any that need to be addressed? Crickets? Okay, and next, we move to chair and member comments. Are there any of those that need to be addressed? Moving right along, any staff comments this evening?
Uh, none for me tonight, no.
I, I had one question for you, and that is, um, I apologize to everyone, because I know we're wrapping, we've all had a lot. The lid, is there anything new happening with the lid concept? Or anything happening? Is there anything happening, even if it's not new?
Yeah, the, the study continues, you know, Mick Johnson is, is part of that, um, Bill Newendorf is, is heading that up. I know they're, they're talking about putting a timeframe schedule together, it's going to tie into the comprehensive plan in two thousand eighteen. So, nothing is scheduled that I'm aware of today, but it's, the process is moving along.
Okay. Uh, next on the item, the agenda is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion second, all in favor? Any nays? Good evening. Good evening.